Budget summary and means.
Okay, we'll call the budget hearings to order, nine twenty-two budget hearings. I'll just remind, as we go through the hearings, we had been pretty lax last couple, last meeting about not being recognized before speaking, we need to start doing that. So then each commissioner, when they ask a question can follow up. That's my fault. We started out, we only had three, and so it was, we kept it pretty informal, but after yesterday, I think we need to kind of do that. It's that way everybody gets their chance to get their questions answered, so. But first up on, on the agenda is Scott with Weed and Pest.
Good morning, commissioners.
Way at the bank.
I got three budgets. Which one do you want to start with first, preference?
We got Department and our seeds.
Six fifteen.
Okay, so that's the Weed and Pest budget. If you look at the bottom there, I actually got a twenty-five hun- a little over a twenty-five hundred dollar cut to that budget this year. The big cut or big savings was healthcare. My wife went to work for Black Hills Energy, so our family insurance is now with Black Hills Energy, so that's where the big saving was, and our line item there on personnel.
Wow.
Yeah. It was a big savings for us too, so it was nice. And then, if you look at my operations, I moved some numbers around there, and for some reason I had a thirty-two, a hundred and thirty-two dollars, a straight thirty-two dollars in there, so I just zeroed that out, so there was savings of thirty-two dollars in there in the operations. And then, in capital assets, I did bump that up by fifteen thousand for vehicle replacement. We got a two thousand Jeep. It actually used to be the old emergency management Jeep that Park Owens had. It's got, it's got a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it. It's starting to rust and kind of fall apart, so it's either put money into that or surplus it, and then what I'm going to do is that my, my vehicle that I drive is a two thousand eight Toyota Tacoma, a little pickup that's got seventy thousand on that, so that'll be rolled over in place, and that's what our enforcement inspector drives, so. And then he'd have a little spray tank in there too, and then I just replaced the pickup, the good larger small pickup, so. As far as revenues, we left it the same. I left it the same. Yeah, my budget's revenue dependent. And this year, the Forest Service did have a dip in there, because we do have a big Forest Service contract that we sprayed timber sales with, and that was cut by seventy percent this year, just because those KB funds, which is on timber sales, is kind of the rolling five-year average, and this year just happened to be a dip. We did write a letter to the Forest Supervisor, the Weed Board did, expressing our concern, because even one-year dip like that's going to lose a lot of ground on what we gain over the years spraying weeds. And we did get some money back, but we are going to be probably about ten thousand dollars short roughly. We just found out we got another twenty thousand that they've got at the region, so they've been, been beating the bushes for money. So we did get a little bit of that back, but, and that, so if I'm ten thousand dollars short around me, then I just don't spend that on my budget side, so. But next year, it sounds like it's going to pick back up, and we're going to meet with the Forest Supervisor and see what we can do to stabilize that funding and get more funding for the weeds and black hills as a, as a whole, talk to professionals and as well to try to get stable funds, so. The next one is our natural resources management, six-one-six. There's a cut in there as well. The big cut was the, down in the capital assets, we bought the Skidster last year and then bought the Mas- Masquading Head to do our fields reduction work this year. So that, that takes care of our equipment. I did put a thousand dollars in there for a chainsaw replacement. We, you know, we cut over three thousand trees in the winter time, so we use those, those saws hard, and they're good saws, but they do wear out after a while, so. That's just for some chainsaw replacements. So you can see twenty-three thousand dollar savings there. I do have some good news on that front. Title three funds from the Securities Rule Schools Act was reallocated. So we're getting thirty-four thousand dollars each year from the Title II dollars. And we used to be.
Thanks, Scott.
And the Title III funds, they used to be pretty wide open on what we could use them on, and then, I think back in two thousand eight, they really restricted what you could use those funds for. And those old funds had built up to a pretty good amount, I think about a half million dollars. And we used a lot of those on the pine beetle fight, but the new dollars, we couldn't use it on pine beetle. Basically, the new dollars is all we could use it on was search and rescue through the sheriff's office, and that event had to take place on the forest. So somebody would have to be lost in the forest, and then the county helped out through search and rescue to where we could claim those dollars. And we kept harping to the congressional reps that we made these funds too restrictive, we can't use them. So they finally did something about it this year, and if you look there, where I highlighted number four there, it used to say to develop a community wildfire protection plans. Well, you can develop it, write the plan, but you can't implement it. So now they included a key word there, carry out, so our, our field plan, community wildfire field plan that was developed all back, I think, two thousand thirteen was updated, but was adopted in oh seven by the county commissioners, and we have shaded field breaks in there. So the work we're doing on the Forest Service now through our agreement to do those shaded field breaks on the county rightways, we can now use these funds for. So instead of building it up and waiting for a search and rescue event, we can use it right now and basically have a savings to the general fund, so. That's going to be up to you guys, how you want to use that, because it kind of goes through and describes what you can use it on, but I guess my pitch is that we use it for shade field breaks, and then that would just be savings in, in my budget. It'd be like revenue coming in, and I just save not thirty-four thousand off whatever my impact is on that budget, so.
So Scott, with what you just said, how much do you think you should have saved up for a, a search and rescue event?
You know, I guess that'd be the sheriff's question, you know, I don't know if they have a fund sitting there for that, or if they're completely reliant on that, on this, this funding coming. Do you know, Julie?
They can, they don't have any stored. They just put in a budget, and because it was Title III money, if they had a search, then they charged us back, and they could get the revenue back into the search and rescue. So it didn't really, per se, go through law enforcement. The thing with Title III, this Title money, is we have to have a public hearing, and that's when you'll decide. There's nothing in the two thousand nineteen budget for either search and rescue or any Scott's things, because we haven't had the hearing yet. So when you have the hearing and make those decisions, which I'm sure the sheriff will be here for that discussion, and other public can come in and request the use of the funds, once the board makes the decision, then in January of two thousand nineteen, we will see how much search and rescue does not use of their budget this year, or if they need more for their searches, which they'd have to come to the board for that decision. So you'd want to make sure you include that in the, in, in the hearing to cover eighteen overage if the board wants, and then we do the supplement in two thousand nineteen for what you have.
Thank you.
So yeah, so these funds can build up, but if you don't use them, they'll revert back to the federal government, so, you know, you could use them and then put them in your stored whatever, and then that, that could be used if you do have a search and rescue event, then you have, you could use that. I mean, at least then you have it, it's captured, to where you're just waiting on a what-if, I mean, there's lines of certainty, and this would also help me leverage Forest Service saying, hey, we got these dollars, let's get some more of these agreements in place, because that's part of the problem, is they, I'm waiting on them to get us places where we can go, and if, like, say, well, we got these Title III dollars, so that might help persuade them to get our agreements in place in a more timely fashion.
Okay, Ms. Hattcock has a question.
I need to reckon, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, that's why I was talking to Commissioner Pasanto about, can we use Title III funds for like the Fire Service Board and some of their stuff?
If you read through.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, you can use it for some equipment costs and stuff like that. If you look at the sec- top of the second page.
Yep, that's right.
Where it says what search and rescue and emergency management, including firefighting, law enforcement may be urged for using Title III funds. But then it kind of goes through, and I talked to Jerome about this, how they opened him up, and he, he had some interest in it obviously too, so.
Thank you.
So what I, what I have to do is I need to advertise, so you need to advertise and do a forty-five day comment period. So I'll do that here in the first part of July, and then we'll come back in September and then have that public hearing. And I talked to Al Schaefer, the, the state auditor, about this and about using it on field breaks, and he's like, yeah, as long as it's in your plan. He's like, I don't see a problem with that. Some of the other uses, it's always good to bounce it off him, because he's the one who's going to audit it. But we can, you know, leave the general on the forty, forty-five day comment period. He's like, maybe you want, maybe be a little more specific, but I don't, I think you can still keep it pretty broad as we've done in the past, and then at that time, we can have the sheriff and the fire folks up here and have a, have a discussion about it, how best to use it. But like I said, you know, mine, it's a set deal, and then it, that, that'd just be savings there that you could then have, and then you could put it into the fire or search and rescue. We just need to capture that money so it's not sitting there unused, sort of say, that feds could come in and take it back, because you don't want that thing to build up over time, because that raises eyebrows, and it's like, well, why aren't you using this money? But I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. Every year, it's a question whether it gets renewed, it's always on the chopping block at the congressional level. The other good thing is Title II dollars that are also awarded, there's probably going to be about forty thousand in that, and that goes through the RAC, the Resource Advisory Committee, that the Forest Service sets up. And you could put in for projects, it's kind of like a grant project, and I've been real successful. I think everyone I put in for has been awarded, so I've used them on pine beetle, not just weed projects and stuff like that. I'm sure the Fire Board or something could use it on something like that too. It's something, but it has to be used on Forest Service property, basically, Forest Service land.
And Title II does, or Title III?
What's that?
I'm sorry, Chairman. Sorry, just comes to the brain. So Title II is for, both those are for?
Title II is, goes to the Forest Service, and they award those to RAC projects, and then the Title III comes directly to you guys. What's that, RAC?
Then Title III?
Title III goes right to you guys. That's the thirty-four thousand that we just, the county just received here a month ago.
Thank you.
And that's for two thousand nineteen. I think there's thirty thousand or something sitting in there for this year.
Mr. Pasando.
So Scott, what I'm hearing from you is that there's going to be several different departments that could be possibly competing for this thirty-four thousand?
Yep.
And if we distribute the thirty-four thousand to you, it's just going to free up money you would have spent anyway, that we can redistribute to one of the other departments anyhow.
Right, it, it would be basically a thirty-four thousand dollar savings in my budget. That's, my budget's set. I mean, it's, so it just, we already got those costs figured in for doing our field breaks. So then that'd be a thirty-four thousand dollar savings to the county on your general fund dollars, basically, to what you could do, what you, where, where you would want to put it. The way I look at it.
And Julie, would that be true if we dispersed this to another department? Is it going to do the same thing?
If you're talking two thousand nineteen, you've got those expenses in your budget. Other than appearance of what we're using it for under weed, there is nothing in the two thousand nineteen budget for search and rescue.
Okay.
And it can be used on equipment for county fire that goes to volunteers, not on. That would be addition to what his funding, it would help his funding source. It's just something that you couldn't rely on, and it's not enough to cover county fire deficit, so you'd still need to consider an opt-out for a reduction in his budget. So.
But it would be a sixteen thousand dollar reduction in their budget instead of a fifty county fire. They're fifty thousand short, if we were able to take the thirty-four thousand savings from him, put it into county fire, then we're only short sixteen grand, right?
Correct. The, the problem with that thinking is it's not a long-term promise from the federal government.
Okay. So it's a Band-Aid.
It's a Band-Aid that you would only want to use like on, well, obviously for the equipment that Jerome purchases for all the fire departments, but at a point when you, when we stop getting that money, which is annually renewed, then you have the problem. You can still use it for that Band-Aid, which will expand the amount of time before you have to do an opt-out, but when you do, and if you do consider an opt-out, you'd want to make the assumption and make that amount large enough when you do lose that money.
Sure.
On an opt-out, if you don't use it one year, it, you can use it the next year. It's not like the regular taxes. So if you had an opt-out of fifty thousand, and you had thirty-four thousand from the federal government through this Title money, you would only have to use sixteen of it, but then it would be there when that money went away.
All right.
Yep.
Any further follow-up on?
No follow-up.
Good on six-one-six. And then my last budget is the one oh one zero one six six, the predatory control. That's just kind of a pass-through. We get billed twice a year from South Dakota Game Fishing Parks, and that pays for the state trapper. He does, we get a great bang for a buck there, and Game Fishing Parks matches those dollars two to one, so. And that's based on the agricultural census on our cattle and sheep head count in the county, and those are done every five years, so. This will be stable through, we just got it back at May fifteenth. Those rates will remain the same until October of two thousand nineteen, so, and then that's when the new census will come out, so. Next budget hearing will have a different number. I don't know whether it'll go up or down, depending when they did that count, and then that'll be our five-year figure for the next five years, so.
Well, thanks, Scott.
You're welcome, yeah.
Is there any further questions from the board, Scott, or comments?
Yeah, Scott, anytime you need a little help getting rid of some predatory animals, just give me a call. Got a few pieces of equipment that work real well for that.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, guys.
A little bit ahead. Let's find planning.
Yeah, I like these budgets that go down.
Yeah, can't beat that. And offer some solutions for the.
Right.
That's, you can't beat that.
Good spot.
Okay, Cass, we got everybody.
Didn't Danny, can I ask, rescue, didn't Danny have Title III funds? I remember Danny always talking about Title III funds.
I think so too.
A lot. And then I didn't see none on our state, so it's kind of weird.
He's raring to go.
I know, I'm just saying, so I want to tell them about where they can go.
Hey, guys. Sorry you guys get me today, so bear with me. I helped with the budget, but I, there might be some questions that you might ask that you kind of get the deer in the headlights, look for a second, so bear with me. PJ's on his way back from Phoenix today. So a couple changes, the big changes in our budget are, we actually took some money out of some miscellaneous fees that we had allocated last year and actually re-put it into some publishing costs. That is for the ordinance amendments that are coming up, the comp plan, advertising for all of those. So we kind of put some more into the budget for that, to prepare for those extra advertising costs. The other thing that we did is we did put some more money into the budget for some new copiers, and also for extra paper and ink and things like that, that it will take to make those extra copies and things like that for some anticipated committees, for ordinance amendments, things along those lines. We actually did just renegotiate our copier contract, so hopefully that will help with some of that cost as well. We negotiated our contract, we're looking at getting some new, more efficient copiers, and also a more efficient scanner as well, to help us save some time and be more efficient at the same time. The biggest thing that we are doing with our budget this year is we actually have been working with the highway department and with the auditor's office. What we're looking at doing is reallocating some drainage fund money. Currently, the way that our building permits work is the first sixty dollars of every building permit that we take in, we actually keep in planning and zoning, but the rest of it goes to the highway department with the drainage fund. It's my understanding that the average in that drainage fund over the last several years has been about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So PJ has actually worked with Tom, worked it out, where highway will take the first sixty thousand dollars of what comes into the drainage fund, and the rest will actually stay in planning and zoning. So what we would like to do with that money, just by simply reallocating it, is we would like to hire an additional planner too, which won't actually have an impact on our budget. We won't have to ask you guys for more money to do that. It's just reallocating those funds to help us, so that we can have more people to help the public be more efficient, be more effective.
That would be for the planner too, right?
Yes. We're also hoping that maybe some of that could also go for some new software. We've been looking at some software options and things along those lines, so hopefully maybe with some of that drainage fund reallocation, we might be able to get some new software as well.
Chairman.
Mrs. Hattcock.
Ms. Julie, so did you already change our budgets accordingly on the, because I see the sixty-five thousand on the budget summary, but I didn't know if we had switched already that sixty thousand goes to, from the hundred and twenty-five, what about that?
Seen that, but.
I know I removed it from the road and bridge, because regardless of your decision, since it's a special fund, whether you removed it or not, it would still stay in his fund, and you could just do a supplement, or it would build up his reserve. I don't know if they submitted it as. Where that fee is, is, we reduced it from road and bridge, but it shows in, as a support for the one FTE. So it's not in your revenue, miscellaneous revenue summary, but it is used, they are using that to support the one FTE. And you make the decision that the sixty-five thousand for drainage stays in road and bridge, yes, you can do that. He's taken money out of reserves anyway, so it would just go in there to change that, or we could change the revenue. You could approve the FTE without the funding, or you could approve the FTE with the funding, or not approve the FTE at all, and still switch the revenue. It was by board motion that the drainage revenue, which they produce in their office, the drainage fees from permits?
Yes.
Yes, all come through there, and several years ago, the board assigned drainage maintenance to the highway department, so the drainage fees went with it, the entire drainage fee and the balance. Now, in the past, road and bridge has not used the entire revenue, and we have that set up in a special reserve. We have to keep drainage money separate from his road monies.
So. Did you have a follow-up?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so basically, is what, what you're asking for is sixty thousand from that, and.
Sixty-five.
And you guys have sat down with Tom and most, and I, it seems like I remember talking about that before, that you guys have worked that out, so.
Yes, yep, we've had discussions with Tom.
And so, okay.
So Chairman, it's sixty-five.
Yeah, that's what I was looking.
And sixty from Tom.
Yeah. So would, would that need to have a motion, Julie?
I think we can address that motion as we see what decision you make when you, when you look at new FTEs.
Okay, okay.
If we want to change the revenue stream, we'll make a motion. If we don't, then we don't have to make a motion, and then you can approve or not approve the FTE. You have both options. You don't have to approve the FTE and move the money. It just means sixty-five thousand more would come out in general.
But I do remember some of the talk about the technology too, so that's, I just wanted to make, it shouldn't all be tied into just an FTE, but also could be technology. Okay, go ahead, Cassie. Unless there's more questions from the commission.
Thank you.
Was that it?
That's all I got. I don't even need PJ, see? Yeah, we just have one budget now, so that's all I got. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. That was five minutes, seven minutes.
We got a brownie for you. Brownie points, that's funny. Okay.
John?
You got seven minutes.
Very good. Let me, let me just find your spot here.
Resources in the middle.
There we go. I suppose he's towards the, oh, here we go. Oh, that's, there we go. All right, John.
Good morning, commissioners, John Morrell, county HR director. Thank you for reviewing this with us today. So as my first time through, I, I did research the, the past several years to, to take a peek at some of the trends and some of the, the money that was turned back in, and I, I think the budget that you'll find here will be acceptable. There are some changes, and I'll go through some of those. I did submit a, a narrative, if you will, a memo that kind of explained some of those changes for you. The first is with regard to personnel. So both of the, the HR positions for the county were replaced this last year as we came into, to two thousand eighteen. Collectively, there's an increase in expense, because you have a fifteen-year employee that moved into the generalist position, and then you have myself that came in from the outside as well, and because of that, we see an increase in overall personnel costs. And this includes insurance, retirement, work comp, those types of things. Of thirteen thousand dollars is the budgeted amount that we're asking for this coming year. So for a, a change, if you look at one sixty-five, four seventeen was approved for two thousand eighteen, we're asking for one seventy-eight, four sixty-nine for those same two people. It's just that the, the change is in salaries, and then again, the related expenses that go along with, with social security, work comp, those things also will increase that expense. We offset that actually, so you'll, Mr. Busker, you commented earlier, I believe, about seeing negative or decreases in budget. We have a very slight decrease that we're asking for this coming year of about twelve hundred and seventy-seven dollars. But some of that is going to be offset with services and fees, other advertising, job recruitment, those types of things. The services and fees, what's happened in the last several years, we've actually turned much of that money back. What Sandy and I have started doing, and then Sandra Sortland, the HR journalist and myself, is we started actually conducting some of the training ourselves. So we've, we've conducted, when I first came in, we did a lot of informational sessions, if you will, with a broad spectrum of county employees. We had about fifteen sessions to talk about the compensation program that had been approved for the current year. as well as the sick leave programs that we had, and then the new benefits. It was basically just to inform people about the programs that we had in existence, and then to make them aware of some proposed changes. But we also went in and actually did FMLA training, ADA training, work comp training. Uh, we recently had, um, Leah Braun, uh, from Harney Business Group come in and do some customer service training. Uh, and we do this jointly with the city, which helps, again, decrease the overall expense. Uh, and what's nice about that is they benefit from the same programs. We get interaction. And I think that was the, the biggest aha for me, as we brought the city in for our customer service training, is there's a lot of similarities in concerns and customer feedback and some of the challenges. But each department sometimes feels that it's only them that are receiving that, that negative feedback, or maybe, um, the lack of empathy. Uh, and having the different groups here to talk to each other and share some of those experiences was a big bonus, uh, that we didn't anticipate. Um, overall, though, we're looking for about a, a fourteen-thousand-dollar decrease in training costs, recruitment costs, just because of that consolidation and working with the city, and then again, with Sandy and I doing some of the, the law training, if you will, around compliance and those things for the county. We believe that we can still offer some great training for our folks, but yet reduce the overall expense to the county. Um, with recruitment, we discovered that there was, um, so this won't actually change. When you see the recruitment budget decrease of about twenty-nine-hundred dollars, it's not actually going to change the effectiveness. What we found was that we were being billed for two additional line items with our recruiting budgets, um, from the, the local, uh, paper, Rappi City Journal. They were doing some banner ads that just were directing people to our website. Uh, and there was some sizable expenses that were associated with that on a monthly basis. We asked them to stop that. Uh, it was another ad that they had been running on a regular basis as well, online. But again, it was just referring people to our website, so we asked them to stop that as well. We will have a new contract from them this coming week, um, for the upcoming year that we believe will still give us great coverage. Um, and then also be able to still provide the, the recruiting needs that we have for the county. What we do, um, get from the benefit, and this is kind of a hidden benefit, is when I, I met with, um, the Department Labor Representative, uh, Mr. Wittersham here in town last week. Um, he shared with me that the Department Labor actually views all of the ads on our county website. They grab that information and put it up on the Department Labor website, which also gets broadcast across the country. Uh, but in addition to that, because we use NeoGov, there was a letter box that we could check that actually put all of our postings online in other areas. So there's well over fifty different sites that I've found by checking that box that were getting additional advertising for the positions that we have open. Um, so it's been wonderful to see the different changes that were just some simple changes that we might not have been aware of, but will still allow us to be effective and yet have a reduced cost. Um, so overall, the, I'm sorry? Um, I thought I heard a question, I apologize. No. Um, so overall, we're looking for a, a reduced, uh, ask for the coming year of about twelve-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, um, compared to the twenty-eighteen budget.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. McRae, Mr. DeSanto?
Um, I've been paying attention past year for travel and conference, and I'm trying to keep track of that and why we're spending so much money on travel and conference. And, uh, again, this is a pretty large number for two people in an apartment. Um, so what are we, what are we doing?
Yep, you bet. So for the upcoming year, this year, we benefited from the fact that the local HR conference, the state HR conference that we participated in, was actually just in Deadwood. So our travel expense was minimal. Neither Sandy or I spent the night. We, we commuted each day, which saved the cost, and as well as having it here locally. So it really minimized the expense to the county. The one that's coming up this, this next year is going to be in Aberdeen, so there'll be additional travel costs associated with that. And then also, two of the seminars that, that Nick had attended in the past, we plan on having a person at each of those. So one is actually the HR conference. That's going to be held in Las Vegas this coming summer, uh, so summer of twenty-nineteen in July. Uh, and then also, there's a fall conference with regard to NeoGov and how to use the system at its best capacity. Neither of us are experts at NeoGov. We're learning by trial and error, and that's to hopefully help us be better suited with that program as well.
And you said that there's going to be one of you going to?
Yes, sir.
Putting it up for?
Well, that way we can get the benefit, and we each have the chance to connect with folks. And I think getting she and I both into these different things will help us also create the network that we need to help support the department.
Okay, so both of you will be going to the HR conference?
We will both be going to that one in Aberdeen, correct?
The fall conference?
The, the fall conference and myself.
And the, uh, HR conference?
The HR conference at this point, that one's still yet to be decided. We would both benefit from that. There's recertification credits as well. But it's a four-day conference, and I'm not sure that I want us both to be gone again for that event, so.
All right.
Um, they're, they're built into this, though, Mark, but, uh, again, they, the goal here is to minimize the expense if at all possible and still get the maximum benefit.
The fall conferences, how many, the, the HR is four days. How long is the fall?
The fall conference is two.
Okay.
Yeah, great questions.
Yep. Don't, I think the only thing I had to follow up on with, with what Mark says, I think Sandy's got some certification she needs to get qualified for, and that was part of that.
Yes.
This is going to help, okay.
Yep, you bet.
John said you need to speak into your mic.
Yeah. Hello?
Something that's not mentioned in the budget, and actually Julie reminded us of this. I was going to wait one more year on this, so we'll have to actually take a look within the department budgets across the county, and it, it's really be at your discretion. Um, the last time we actually did a staffing review and wage review, it was initiated in twenty-fourteen, with the study being completed in twenty-fifteen. And we actually implemented the financial changes to our, our structure, if you will, compensation, uh, was January of twenty-sixteen. It's like a two-year process from the time we actually initiate it until we actually put it in place. So know that that may be something that will actually, um, entertain this year later. Um, but again, the expenses for that in, in its entirety was right around ninety thousand dollars when I pulled up the, the invoices from the prior time.
John, I have a question on.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad that you brought that up, because I think it was twen- like, like you said, twenty-six, twenty-fourteen's when they did it, and then started to implement it in twenty-sixteen. And then we've got some other departments that, I'm not going to ma- mention no names, that come up and say, you know, we're still under, or what, we need to do some work on some stuff to get things equalized, to do, stabilize our employees. I've got some ideas on some different stuff to do in the departments that I guess I'd like to sit down. I don't want to really throw anything out, but I think this wage study, my, my gosh, we did, we just did it two years ago. We should have had a plan to keep up.
Yes, since John's, if I may. If I may, Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, when the board, um, accepted that or started on that process, they made a motion that it would be redone every five years. So that motion is on the floor. So you don't need to make that motion. Also, in that motion, the department heads will absorb that cost into their budget whatever year, so it's not an expense.
Okay.
And they can't go back on that, and they won't on a wage study guarantee it. They will absorb it. And when you spread it out around seven-hundred-and-some employees to each department, it, it's minimal.
Okay.
When you're looking at a hundred-million-dollar budget, so don't let them whine in a year when I'm gone.
Okay. But we do have a set program, five years.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the good, good news.
Yeah, and, and so, and, and John's being new, so he doesn't, he didn't, he wasn't aware of probably either one of those. I just sent him an email the other day, because KJ mentioned it to me, that he needed to know when we leave that, that process, however the five years, however long it takes to get it started, so in twenty-twenty-one budget, it's ready to put in.
Okay.
And I would suggest you, you, uh, do it a different way and with a different company.
Okay.
Just to get a different perspective on wages, because we had the same company for several different times, and you just need new blood, and it might erase some of the problems that, that we've heard on certain,
Okay.
especially certain job titles or job.
Yeah.
Like you were brought up by the attorneys.
That insight's fantastic. I mean, to even consider a different company, just to change it up and see if there is difference.
There's a number of different vendors that are available for that, so I've done this with past, uh, employers. Um, but yeah, we use Condry in two thousand nine, and then get in two thousand fourteen. Um, so again, getting a different perspective on that would be helpful. Uh, we've also begun doing exit interviews with folks as they leave the county. Um, so you heard Mr. Vargo speak about, he, he lost a person because of the compression issues that we have. Um, she was very adamant that she loved her job, but she was really upset with the fact that someone that was newly hired was only making about sixty thou- or sixty cents less an hour than what she had after being there several years. Uh, the highway department, recently, we've had two employees come in as well. Um, and the, the one I spoke with actually just yesterday said he's more than doubling his wage with the county just by going to a different employer in the area, so he doesn't have to relocate or do anything different. Still doing the same type of equipment, same type of job, um, but he's more than doubling his wage. Um, so there are some different things like that, and within the nine-one-one center as well. And I think you guys have heard that already too, from, from Ted, and, and I think from Kevin a bit. But, um, there's some concerns there as well. They, they were hard-hit with the last study, uh, with decreases in nearly every position. Uh, and yet, you guys are aware of the stresses that they face in the twelve-hour schedules, and, and it is a tough position. It truly is. So there's some things like that that are obviously in need of attention. Um, we've had, for example, a position posted for the, the PDL Public Defender's Office for four months now and have yet to fill it. Uh, and now he has a second one he'll have open here in two months. Um, so we're looking at a, a starting wage of fifty-four-hundred hours a month for an attorney in that type of a situation with a ton of overtime, and again, a thankless position. It's difficult to attract. Uh, and we've put advertisement across the country for that, different bar associations, different websites, and then through our sites. Uh, and yet, uh, we've only had thirteen applicants in four months, and none of those had either the, the minimum requisition or were people that we wanted to put on our team, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Well, I, and, and that, I, I'll have to say that, uh, part of going to these conferences for HR is part of it's going to be learning what's happening in our communities and our workforces, and trying to come up with strategies to do something different. And that's probably one of the things I wanted to talk to you about, is, you know, we're struggling with, yeah, I mean, we'd like to just say, here, we're going to be competitive, and here's all the wages if we could. Would we really still be any better? We don't know. There, there may be some other things we have to do. There's been conferences I've been to where we talk about uh, more flexible schedules, more, you know, a lot of, a lot of different entities where you could tear up to get trainees to do, you know, that's something I, I, I think we need to have a good conversation about.
You bet.
At some point, you know. The overtime is not a, a good thing. Some people like it, but it's not for everybody. You got to have a life to do a good job.
I agree. Any, any questions?
Good job, John.
Chairman?
Miss Hattcock?
Speech. John, um, you're doing a ruthless job. Hear lots of compliments on you. Um, I'm glad you have joined our team at Pennington County. Um, again, thank you for coming to our Fire Service Board and going around to different departments and actually, um, seeing, you know, what everybody does. That's a huge difference, so, um, I'm glad you're with us.
I appreciate that, thank you. I feel very fortunate.
Thanks, John. Any further questions for John?
Nope.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Looks like we're going to take a short break.
I texted him, said, get down here.
That's okay, I'm good with a break.
Ten minutes?
Already.
Ten o'clock? Love you and my motion.
And the problem is, we've got to stick around because when you get to the other people, you got.
Okay, so.
If we get that low, no, we can't really.
Okay, guys, ten minutes.
How much you?
My motion.
Yeah. Moved by just, by Hattcock, second by DeSanto to take recess.
If you say so.
I thought it's in your, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll continue on with the budget hearings today with, uh, Equalization, Shannon?
Good morning.
Good morning, Shannon.
I don't have much to say. My budget is pretty much the same as it was last year. I don't expect any real changes, um, certainly not to add in any staff. Uh, we do have some appraisers. Because we've replaced some older repli- appraisers that have retired over the years, we have some younger, newer ones that are up for promotion next year. And, uh, we will have a couple of, uh, a couple of our older appraisers, well, appraiser and office staff retiring, and so we'll, we'll replace those. Um, that's sort of what we've experienced the last several years. Um, I, uh, other than, uh, the, the increase in the wages for, uh, for a raise and for those things, that my budget is the same.
Okay. Um, I'm sure Mark's got a question.
Yeah.
Sorry to put him. Because I looked at his training budget, and I thought, I knew you'd like to ask some questions.
I want to, I, I just want to know what's the plan for the travel? Where are we going, and how many people are going, and?
Okay.
It's a lot of money.
Uh, in South Dakota, for an appraiser in an assessor's office to put value on a property, we have to be certified by the state as a certified assessor. And the requirement for that is, we, uh, initially have to take some classes and pass a test to gain that certification.
Right.
Then to maintain it, we have to attend a school every year, a conference and a workshop. And, uh, the school is a tested, uh, it's a week-long tested school. Uh, we have to, uh, we have to maintain that as continuing education for anybody in our office that touches anything that affects value. That is by far the majority of our travel budget. Uh, we, uh, for the size of our office, um, we do have a large travel budget because of that requirement.
Great. And in your office, you have how many total employees?
We have twenty-two. There's, uh, fifteen appraisers, and then, uh, deputy and the director, then they're also certified.
Okay, so the, the people that have to attend the CE workshop and school are the appraisers? Or are there additional people in the office that have to attend?
The, the, the makeup of our office, twen- twenty-two.
Right.
All right, uh, we have two receptionists who do other things.
Okay.
We have a map tech, who's Luanne, who, uh, who does Rapid Map.
Okay.
Uh, we have Linda, who does the books in the office, and then all of the ownership transfers. And, uh, a camera manager, which is Deb Groot, who manages the computer system.
Correct.
Those are the office staff that are not required to maintain a certification. They will occasionally attend education, especially Luanne and Deb, uh, but they're not required, uh, continuing education. Everybody else in the office, because we touch value,
Okay.
has to go to school, uh, pass a test.
All right.
Now, most of our school is in South Dakota. Next year, our school's going to be in Spearfish. Uh, all of our school is in S- uh, South Dakota. Next year's in Spearfish, uh, usually it's in Pier, so we don't, we don't travel very far, but we usually have to go to Pier.
And I'm assuming that quite a lot of this thirty thousand dollars, then in that case, is, um, fees for the workshop and the conference, not necessarily airplane tickets and rental car fees and that kind of stuff.
Absolutely. Now, we've got, uh, some other travel expense that I'm happy to say this year we don't have. Uh, when somebody appeals from County Board of Equalization to the Office of Hearing Examiners in Pier, there's more travel there. We have to send an appraiser down, uh, Pier, and there have been times in Pier where we have spent three or four days in Pier for those hearings.
Okay.
We are not, this is the first year that I've been doing this ever, that I haven't had to travel to Pier. I will miss out on the religious pilgrimage to Pier for the first time in my career. Uh, but we, we usually have, uh, have several days of that, several appraisers traveling for that.
Very good. Okay, thanks, Shannon, I appreciate that.
So, any other further questions, Mr. Bu-
I'm just glad I don't have to go to Pier with him anymore.
First time ever, um, eighteen years. Uh, this is the first time ever I've not had an appeal in Pier. And, and we did. And, and we did. Uh, we had three of them. A tax rep representing the Menards Corporation appealed the Menard store, a bear lot sitting next to the Menard store and the Dakota Panel, former Merrelat plant. Uh, the tax rep has appealed properties for Menards in the past and, uh, just simply not shown in Pier. Uh, writing an appraisal for a Menard store and a manufacturing plant is a huge amount of work. And, uh, we, um, had some discussions with the Menards Corporation and they dropped the appeal. Um, the tax reps make a commission. So what they really do is they just hope that if they file appeal, we'll agree to lower it some and then they make money and everything is happy in their world. Uh, we don't do that. We didn't wanna go to Pier and find out that the tax rep from Minneapolis just didn't drive out for it. Uh, so we're happy that he, uh, pulled the appeal before we had to go to all that work.
That's interesting to know. Doug, do you have any? I think we're good, Shannon.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Yep.
Seriously, that was six minutes?
Hold on, Shannon. Get back in here. Get in here, Shannon. Man, you done.
I, uh, in this particular department, I'm not surprised by the, the amount of cost. Oh, no, I, I just, I knew it was due, but. But there's other departments where. Yeah. I, I am surprised. I mean, obviously being in the insurance business, I have to do a lot of C E's and stuff like that. You hit on a good part of that is, uh, conference fees. Membership fees are all included into that. It's, it's not just, oh, you got that. I get that. When you, when you break it down, seventeen, seventeen people having to, yeah, let's do that. That's, that's a little, little less than two grand apiece. Yeah. Still, just for my C E's, for the, for the twenty I've got to get every year, cost me about eleven hundred bucks. Yeah.
Yeah, no, motel rooms, you know, a hundred or so.
That's cheap if you buy them for.
Yeah.
Ready for us now?
Well, sure. Come on up. Never ready for you guys.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I'm Matt Aden. I'm the, uh, the president of the, uh, Extension Advisory Board. And I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to speak with you all this morning. Um, I'll introduce the others of our board that are in our, that are in attendance today. Patty Bruner is here. She's our vice president. Um, and Dallas Boss is here as well. She's on our board. Um, Ron Dinger and Joyce Bumman weren't able to be here. Um, and then Commissioner DeSanto also sits on our board as well. And I thank him for all of his, uh, his assistance and guidance with that. Our S D S U Extension for H U, the Youth Program Advisors, Matt Olson and Jane Amiot are both in attendance as well today. Um, so the Extension Advisory Board, uh, works in conjunction with the S D S U Extension, um, for H Youth Program Advisors to oversee the Pennington County for H programs and help to kind of direct that. Uh, through June twenty-second of twenty eighteen, the Pennington County for H program has four hundred and seventy-two for H club members enrolled in nineteen for H clubs throughout Pennington County. Um, additionally, Pennington County has, for H has reached over two thousand ninety-three youth through school enrichment programs throughout the county. Um, overall, Pennington County for H reaches over twenty-five hundred youth annually. Um, spe- spending eighty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars in county funds in twenty seventeen. So this equates to about, about ten cents of the county funds spent on for H programming per youth per day. Um, to help carry out the for H programs, the Pennington County for H office, utilizes a team of over seventy for H volunteers who have been background checked and receive a minimum of three hours of training per year. The Pennington County for H volunteers volunteer an average of five hours per week, which equates to over four hundred and thousand, four hundred and thousand dollars, um, of value to Pennington County for H program. A recent study through Tufts University found that the benefits of being involved in for H programs are immense. When compared to their peers, youth who are involved in for H programs, programming are four times as likely to make contributions to their communities, two times more likely to be civilly active, two times as likely to participate in science programs during out of school time, and two times more likely to make healthier choices. For our twenty nineteen budget request, uh, the Extension Advisory Board has worked to follow the guidelines that were set forth by the county. We believe that we've prepared and presented a, a fiscally conservative, yet realistic budget based on the existing services, programs, and current employee counts. Our total twenty nineteen budget request comes in the same as the approved twenty eighteen budget at ninety thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um, at this time, I'd like to ask Matthew Olson with S D S U Extension for H Youth Program Advisor to, uh, review the major changes in the line items of the budget and answer, and answering the questions you may have.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Matthew Olson, for H Youth Program Advisor in Pennington County, and also serve as the department head for the Extension Office. As Matt mentioned, our overall budget comes, comes in at the same request we had for two thousand eighteen. I just wanted to over, go over the individual line item changes, just so you're aware of how we're, um, changing it this year. So we had just about a one percent increase for our staff salary increase. That's for administrative assistant. And that was based on the step increases that our assistants to receive this coming year and also possible step increase that they could receive. So that comes in about four hundred and fifteen dollars more than last year. On the line items, uh, for contracts, which is, um, the cost share that Pennington County pays to S D S U Extension for, um, second for H Youth Program Advisor, that's Jane Amiot. That went up three percent this year, so that was an increase of five hundred and eighty-three dollars. And to make up for the increase in our staff salary and also the increase in, uh, Jane's salary, we reduced our shredding by fifty dollars. And then also our main decrease, um, was in our mileage. That's for our state vehicle. We decreased that nine hundred and eighty dollars and it, it's not that we're traveling less, it's that we're paying less per mile for use of the state car. So it used to be that we would, um, reimburse the for H advisors individually at, I believe, forty-two cents a mile, but the state car costs thirty-three cents a mile. So we're actually able to do more traveling for less cost. So those are our major changes in the line items for this year. Um, so there's our total budget begins, the request is ninety thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So is there any questions for us?
Oh, thanks, Matt. Ms. Hickok?
Um, I've said this since I've been here and I was on the diversion programs. And this is a positive diversion program. That's only gonna be, um, beneficial um, to the kids and the youth, uh, for, for future years. So, um, I'm in agreement with the for H in every sense of the word because it's just, it, it's an awesome, awesome place to go for kids and learning. So thank you for all you guys do.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Seddon. I'd also reflect that sentiment as well. I think that it's a great program to keep our youth busy, keep our youth educated, motivate our youth. Um, you help keep them focused on the, you know, the primary income source in the cut in South Dakota agriculture and getting them involved in different programs and stuff that, that lead them down that path as well. And, um, and I do wanna say that, uh, after sitting and working with the Extension Department, the, these guys, they really watch their, their pennies. Um, and I'm not talking dollars. I'm talking they're watching their pennies. And I appreciate that greatly. So, thanks, guys.
No, um, it's, well, money well spent and it's a shame we have to spend millions of dollars and catching the bad guys and doing something with them and we can't afford to give these people not more money. That's, that's what's too bad.
I think you, you guys got the consensus. The commission appreciates what you, what you guys do and, and I think every member up here has been a part of your guys' team at one point in time and so they all know how important, hard work you guys do and we appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Seddon.
I'll add one more thing to kind of go along with what Ron said. And I told Sheriff Tom this the other day. Programs for our youth, I can't stress the emphasis that, that we need these programs for our youth because when we set these, these roots and these foundations, we're gonna help avoid problems in the future with those kids. And, and, uh, Sheriff Tom agreed that once they become adults, it's a lot more difficult to turn them the other direction. And so if they have direction as a youth and feel cared for and feel like there's something for their lives that's important, then the, you know, as Matt pointed out, um, two times more likely to, to do those things. And, and, uh, I mean, can't, can't emphasize it enough. We, we need more programs like this that are focusing in on our youth and going to our schools and working with them at the schools and stuff like that. So, again, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, we, now we've come to a point.
May wanna have Julie go through.
That's, I was just, I was thinking, wait, does the board, would they like to hear from Julie? Would she brought her stuff up?
Sure.
I'm just so excited. Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor. Um, I've done some preliminary projections for the board and provided you additional information as well as to Holly for the record. Um, what you have in front of you, we all know I love my colors, so we have yellow and purple. What you have is a means of finance and for each color and a new budget summary. I've taken into account on both of these, the changes that were made. Uh, Elections had one, Barry submitted a slight reduction from those questions. We've got the new one from Roden Bridge as well as, um, Commissioners submitted theirs for a, a change in insurance. Elections, I actually took out fifty-eight thousand because we were going to buy more electronic lap pull books. Um, that's changed. Health and Human Services. Um, Juvenile Alternatives was already changed, um, earlier in this, in the discussion due to an input error. So those are the changes that were made from hearings and budget corrections to date to the original submission of the draft one. What I did, um, on the, uh, let's go through the purple one first, which is, I went through and made an assumption that you, so I could get a range to, to meet, um, what I'm perceiving as an, or recommending as a, as a budget goal. The purple one is not including any new F T Es. This would be the bottom of the request. And to balance to the, what's driving this budget is to balance to a nineteen percent goal, which is in column L, five, column L, row five, that nineteen percent reserve. To do that, we would need, um, budgets to go in, department heads to go in. And now, if you pull your budget summary, I added columns T and U. And what that does is that tells us how much of a tax burden cut the department would need to make to bring us down to the night, to bring us up to the nineteen percent. The departments, I think there's just a few assumptions that I've made. If we have static contracts, predatory animal control. It can't take a reduction. It's all taxes because we have a contract. Uh, everything else can, can make a, make a reduction. Um, and I carried it through most of the funds unless they're fully funded by a grant, including Roden Bridge, County Fire, so that everybody is taking this reduction to their tax burden. So, um, which then gives us to the adjusted budget, which takes the tax burden cut off of column O. So with that, if you add no F T Es to bring reserves to nineteen percent in all funds, we would need to make, have the departments make the following cuts. And here's the caveat with the way the motion needs to be. Without decreasing any existing programs or program revenues, which means we have to make efficiencies within our department. We can't come in and say, yep, I'm gonna cut the wall satellite. I'm gonna cut, uh, the security. And you can't say, yep, I'm gonna cut this program and it also cuts revenue because then we're back to having everybody else decrease more. These are minimal reductions. It's not to their entire budget. It's just to how much taxes, which gives benefit to those departments that can bring in other money. But that's where the money comes from is taxes. Now, if you look at the yellow set, means of finance, this includes all of the F T Es to give you the range. Um, and to, if you add all the F T Es in and their subsequent revenues, you would need to make a two point five five percent tax cut, tax burden cut to the budgets, which is what the yellow budget summary does. So that's your range and you see it brings your reserves up to eighteen point nine nine or nineteen point oh one. So that tells you your range. So your decisions that you need to make are how much, if any, of the new F T Es you're going to approve, which is going to be at a later date. Then, uh, this is my suggestion, your motion to across the board cut of the amount between the range that we need when you're done with all your decisions without decreasing existing programs or any program revenues. That means there's more efficiencies. There's less padding, if you will, in the budgets. We try and institute something that will save us money. We don't order that one extra box. I mean, we're talking small dollars when you're looking at almost a hundred million dollar budget. We set reserve goals to nineteen percent by the end of twenty nineteen, which the range of these does that. We are not using in either one or in draft one, we are not using any stored C P I dollars. It's not growth because growth can't be stored anyway. It's just C P I dollars. Depending upon what you add in and what percent of cut we make, if you have all of these others, the no new F T Es and one point seven percent, one point seven five percent tax burden cut would lower your all county levies by four dollars and seventy cents per hundred thousand. If you approve the yellow set, which is the maximum that we would need if you add all the F T Es in, you would be, um, reducing it five dollars and thirty cents. Have I got those?
And thirty.
I've got, no, five dollars and thirty cents because you're making a larger tax burden cut. Even though you're adding things in, you're balancing it out to make a larger tax burden cut. Because we're also affecting all the funds. If General has to do it, they all do. So that's just kinda as you go through and you make your decision on how much, then when you approve a provisional, we can approve it with these caveats if the board wants. You can make more of a cut. You can make less of a cut. You can change your reserve. But this is kind of how these examples, to give you the best information to not use stored C P I, if you want to, to build reserves up, you can include that in your motion. That we make a further reduction or we use stored C P I to make it from nineteen to twenty. Or, or we use stored C P I if you want to you to, um, pay for the new FTEs. So you have, I think, all the information with the draft one, means of finance, and these two. It gives you the range of where you need to go after, when you're at your last hearing and you've made all your cuts and bound and additions. Both of these, like I said, have the, the reason there's such a reduction, it used to be over a hundred million, and now these both budgets are less than that. I'm not sure exactly what Tom project change he made, but he's not implementing that through county funds. So he's using less reserves, which is worth a six million dollar. Both of these new budgets are less than last year's. Now with the reduction of that six or seven million that he's getting someplace else with either one of those.
So Julie, bottom line, well, I appreciate you doing this because now we got, just like as we started out with the board meeting, setting the starting point, this was our starting point in the purple, right? With no employees, just the way it was set.
If you want to meet the qualifications that you have a nineteen percent goal, yeah. If you don't approve any and you want a nineteen percent goal, not use any stored CPIs, you need to do the one-point-seven-five. At the most, if you add them all, you need to cut two-point-two-five if you still want the nineteen percent.
Two-point-five-five.
Two-point-five-five, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair. My question is, is when you talk about reducing levies, four dollars and seventy cents per hundred thousand. So what you're talking about is that each taxpayer that has a house that's worth two-hundred thousand dollars is going to save a total of nine dollars and forty cents on their tax bill.
Yeah, depending upon where the range is.
See that reduction if they don't get reappraised.
If there's no reappraisal.
And and depending on what the schools and the city does.
They will see it in the county, if your value does not change, you would see those reductions between those ranges because you're not using stored CPI. But does that happen? No. Mine went up, they weren't even out there. So, you know, I don't know what their cycle and there are areas that they, I think they reappraise the entire county county and every four or five years, something like that. So, and even if we didn't do that, the state would come in and raise them all up so that the schools are all equal anyway. School levies actually went down. Unless there's a new opt-out, all levies should go down for every taxpayer if your value stayed the same. Because the cities and the fire districts, they all have more value to spread the same dollar amounts on, and our value went up more than the CPI, that's what causes it to go down.
Okay, good, thank you, thanks Julie.
That's a good budget and.
Good ideas.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very much.
Is that young lady out, are you waiting for something?
Yeah, I have supervisors coming, but if you're ready for me, I can go, I'm at the public conservation.
Well, we got time if you want to do it, but if you want to wait for your supervisors, I'm not the boss.
Where, I lost my sheet.
Do you want to be ready to agents with others?
Do we have that in here?
Oh, this is, oh, the list of.
Do we have the information on the outside?
Uh, where's organized outside?
Outside agency, yeah, outside.
Outside organizations. We'll wait a few minutes, that'll give us a chance to kind of review a little bit too.
And remember, we need to call George when you start the outside agencies.
Probably recess for a little bit.
What's our schedule for that then?
Eleven-thirty.
Wow.
Want to recess until ten after, will that give us time to get a hold of George and get him all set up?
See who's here by then.
Yeah, then we still got to wait for, because everybody else has been told.
Yeah.
Eleven-thirty.
Eleven-thirty.
Yep.
Yeah, I just told eleven-thirty, but I was supposed to tell thirty minutes early, so.
I can hold the venue to come early.
And so I can wait, yeah.
Matt did very good.
We might be able to start a little early, there, we're going to have some come.
I didn't, I didn't recognize Matt because he didn't have his hat on.
Yeah, he's always got his odd. Always advertising his ranch, that Matt is.
Okay, so consensus is where I think we're going to have to wait.
At least till quarter after, then we should have a pretty good group here to start.
Quarter after, so let's, let's go ahead and take the recess to eleven-fifteen and then Joan can start getting, trying to get a hold of Mr. Farabee, try at least twice.
So moved.
Moved and seconded recess to eleven-fifteen, all in favor, say aye.
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 Posed, motion carries.
George can hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay. You've got a little bit of a background noise, George.
Hello?
You've got a little bit of background noise, like water's running or something.
Okay, well, I quit, I was just washing, I was outside, I washed my hands, okay, I'm away from the sink, go ahead.
Okay, we're going to come out of recess and start on outside requests. I think we agreed, does anybody want to go over the mandated request? Those are the mandated, the top of our list, that's our insurance, our deductibles, I think we're all pretty good on that. Okay, and we're going to switch those around next year. So that'd bring us up to the O-four-four, which is the mental health center. And so I'll recognize Alan Solano from Behavioral Management Systems.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members, I appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you today. Behavioral Management Systems, we're the community mental health center that covers ten counties in western South Dakota and we've had a longstanding partnership with Pennington County to provide, I think, quite a broad range of services for the residents of Pennington County. We're coming forward to ask for the same dollar amount that we had received actually in the previous years, which is one-hundred thousand nine forty-eight. And what those services do is help us to to provide services for individuals that are low income or indigent that live in Pennington County. And I believe you all, I I hope that you all have a copy of the letter that we'd sent and just some of the numbers that come from that is you'd see that sixty-seven percent of the folks that we serve out of Pennington County have a family income. So it's a family income of less than twenty thousand dollars. The other thing that we do that I think becomes very important for the county, we utilize some of our staff to do medication assistance. And where that becomes important for mental health is that some of the psychotropic medications can be extremely expensive. So it's not unusual for that to be fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars for one prescription and a person may be on on multiple medications. So we work, we on our staff work with the pharmaceutical companies, these are for the indigent residents in Pennington County to provide a lower cost of free psychotropic medications and you can see this bulleted in the letter. The value of that in the free or reduced psychotropic medications is a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars per month. That's a per month, not an annual, but a per month savings. Without us doing that, what we likely would end up seeing is more folks coming to the county for indigent services and asking the counties to help cover those costs directly. So I see that as a, as a, as an advantage. The other thing that we've done in partnership with the county is to establish the Repsi Crisis Care Center. And you can see there's over two thousand people that have been served by the Crisis Care Center in two thousand seventeen. The big advantage there is diversions, and so about twenty-one hundred of those individuals were diverted from either needing inpatient services or the behavioral health at regional detox or jail services. So again, I think that's a great partnership between us and the county and law enforcement in Pennington County and Rapid City. The last thing I just want to touch on is the growing need and maybe it's, is maybe not as much of a growing need, but the identification and services of individuals. Year over year, I'm looking at May thirty-first of two thousand seventeen to May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, to give you an idea. Adults with severe and persistent mental illness. We've served in Rapid City, we've seen a twenty percent increase in the number of clients served year over year when I look at those months. For children with severe emotional behavioral disorders, this again is under a Rapid City Family Pathways Program and serves the Pennington County area, we've seen a forty-two percent increase in the number of kids served year over year. And then lastly, the number of individuals that we've served with our certified nurse practitioners and our psychiatrists for that medication evaluation and management has gone up thirty-three-point-seven percent year over year. So we're seeing certainly growing demand for mental health services. Look, certainly ask for your consideration to continue our partnership in in serving the folks of Pennington County and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Al, is the board, board have any?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Alan, we're looking at, it sounds like to me some increased Medicaid expenditure in the state, you sat on that board. How much money is VMS getting from that?
So not, I wouldn't, the Medicaid that change that has happened is not specifically a Medicaid expansion, meaning there's no, what's happened is no, there's not going to be another individual that is qualified for Medicaid. So the Medicaid rolls have not expanded. What's happened is that the the state who historically had provided Medicaid drug and alcohol services to would be adolescents and then pregnant women was limited, so that's, that's who they would cover with Medicaid drug and alcohol services. That's expanded now to other adults. Our services are for, what we do in drug and alcohol is for pregnant women, so I don't anticipate that we're, we're going to see a change in that. Yeah, because that's, that's the target population that we were serving.
So you'll see no increase in funding?
I'm not anticipating it, I, you know, I'm going to, where, where we need to, where I'm going to be watching is in the low intensity residential, where right now we have that service for, for the pregnant women and women with young children. That service is historically not a Medicaid alcohol service. We receive, what we receive out of that is one-hundred percent state funding. So the funding that we receive for those individuals is one-hundred percent state general funds. So I don't think we would see any additional revenue. It could be that would we see a mix to where instead of the state paying one-hundred percent of the cost, the state pays forty-two percent and the federal, federal's paying the fifty-eight percent, which I think the F map right now. But I'm not anticipating, I'm sure that we see a revenue increase because of this for Behavioral Management System.
Possibly an additional, the state may kick in some additional funds specifically for that purpose.
So.
You won't see the revenue, it'll be kind of a reimbursement type of thing.
What it would be is be a shifting to say, so let's, let's say it's right now, I'll just use a dollar amount, let's say it's a hundred dollars that were reimbursed, so we receive that in revenue. Right now for low intensity clients, that one hundred dollars would be one-hundred percent general funds. So that's all state general funds.
Got you.
What would shift is the potential that that maybe becomes forty-two dollars of general funds and fifty-eight dollars of Medicaid spending authority, I think is what they call it.
Okay.
So, so not, it, for us, we're not really going to see anything, it's just going to be, you know, from the state level, what, what pot in a sense that they, they're taking the money.
Thank you.
So Chairman.
Ms. Ms. Sack.
So the bottom line is you being on that committee and what you've done is you've have added anything to your budgets from it, you've actually just switched it from, from, the feds could be paying more of it, the forty-two percent, if that's what it is, and you guys are the sixty.
George, if you have a mute on your phone, can you get mute? We're getting a lot of feedback.
I'm having a really hard time hearing you. Really hard time.
Well, you're getting a lot of feedback from your phone.
So I'm, I'm glad to hear that because I was just wondering, with you being on the committee and the things that you were doing on there to make sure that, you know, it's.
And if I can explain that a bit, so, so legislatively, legislature provides through statute authority for state agencies to write rules.
Right.
And so there becomes confusion, like on the Rules Review Committee, which I participate on. We have to be very careful on that committee that we're not having a committee of six outvoting or changing what a legislature of one-hundred-and-five has decided. So the law gets passed that allows for the writing of the rules, and on the Rules Committee, our responsibility is to ensure really two things. One, has, is, are the rules that are being written, are, do they fall within what the legislature has granted that agency to do, basically given statutory authority for that agency to do? So if that answer is yes, the second thing that we need to look at is, did the state agency follow the correct rules review process? That's a posting process, it's collecting a public input, taking that public input and moving it forward. If those two things are met, at least for me personally, I look at them and say, we have to be very careful because if I disagree with the statute that was approved, my inkling may be to say, well, I'm going to vote no on that, but then that's basically saying a committee of six gets to decide for a one-hundred-and-five-person legislature. And to me, that's a dangerous precedence to create. And so in this particular rules review, there was clear, for me, when I read the state statute, there was clear state statute that allowed them to write the rules for the people that are, for the services to be reimbursed under Medicaid. And they clearly went through the appropriate rules review process. So it really wasn't about an agreement on the statute.
Right.
That's already in place.
So you guys couldn't really change that because of the legislature, you could be on the committee, but it, it still had a clear understanding through the legislature that this is what was going to happen.
Yeah, yeah, if I don't like the statute, I need to bring a bill and change the statute.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Al.
Is there any further questions for Mr. Solano?
Thank you again, appreciate it.
Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al.
Community Health.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Steph Trindert, I'm the CEO.
My name's Steph Tredart. I'm the CEO for the Community Health Center of the Black Hills. And thank you guys for taking the time again to, uh, and for your ongoing support for the community health center. We are, uh, the, uh, Community Health Center for Pennington County area, for the Black Hills area. Um, uh, we have been existed since the mid-eighties. We are essentially basically the primary care safety net, whereas Alan has taken on most of the mental health sort of things. We take on basically the medical and the dental side of things and provide that safety net. So, uh, we are again requesting, so I hope you guys have the letter, uh, the same amount that we were requesting last year. Hundred and eight thousand dollars and four hundred, hundred and four hundred thousand, um, equal to the amount we asked for last year. Uh, last year we served up close to, uh, uh, thirteen thousand patients, a small shot under thirteen thousand individuals. Um, most of those patients are long weekend and then roughly about thirty of those are uninsured individuals. Uh, and roughly about thirty percent of the patients that we see are actually federal property lines. So, um, we saw, um, uh, close to, uh, twelve hundred homeless patients somewhere in there. Um, we operate three separate clinics. We have our main clinic, it's at three fifty Pine Street up in North Rapid. Um, we've got a school-based clinic at, uh, housed in, um, General Beetle Elementary School. And then we've also got some outreach clinics that we do, um, specifically targeting, uh, homeless populations. We've got one in the men's shelter at Cornerstone to do some outreach into the women's shelter and, um, in the waiting as well. So, um, and our goal is obviously to, uh, try and, uh, keep people from going through emergency and, uh, and keep them from being hospitalized, um, and to keep them healthy. Uh, most of our, uh, patients that come through, they, uh, have chronic illnesses, diabetes, hypertension, mental health illnesses, uh, all those sort of things that, uh, they're on a lot of medications and they require some frequent, uh, constant sort of contact. Our average patient comes through our clinic, uh, two and a half, three times a year. So, uh, they generally have some illnesses that they're dealing with. Uh, one of the big things that we've been able to do over the last year, um, I think probably since I've talked to you guys in the last two years with our new building, we added a pharmacy to our clinic when we built our new clinic a couple of years ago. Um, and right now we're, we're filling out, let's say about fifty thousand, we're probably on track to fill probably about fifty thousand scripts over the course of the year. Uh, and we're able to provide some of those medications at a pretty affordable cost for our patients. Five dollars a med- medication. Uh, and we find that that's huge for patients, for diabetes patients, you know, trying to get onto diabetic meds, which can be pretty expensive. Just like Alan was saying, a lot of our patients are on multiple meds, eight, nine, ten meds. And so we work really hard, uh, to try and identify a lot of the other, uh, psychosocial issues and things that, uh, that can impact patients' health, uh, whether it be transportation, uh, to get to us, uh, so that they can see their provider. Uh, we do a lot of work in terms of what we call med-sinking, so making sure that simple things like, uh, if you're making it in to see a, uh, provider, we want to make sure all of your scripts, uh, all of your prescriptions, if you're on several meds, let's see if we can get them so that you can get them all filled at once. And so you don't have to make multiple trips to come in, and so we can increase some compliance and issues with that. So, um, um, we, uh, employ about eighty staff, uh, within our clinic. Um, um, and, um, um, the interesting thing is, is that roughly about twenty-one percent of our patients um, uh, have, uh, a mental health diagnosis as well. And so we're in process right now, so hopefully here in the next few months by this fall, we're planning on adding and expansion to, uh, uh, increase basically our overall mental health capabilities because we realize that, uh, we see what Alan's doing over in his area, uh, we need more mental health integration within a primary care setting. Uh, because a lot of our patients do have mental health, uh, diagnosis. And so, uh, we're hoping to break around on that this fall and, uh, kind of expand some of what we're doing internally, mental, mental health ones. Um, again, appreciate all of you guys' support. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Then Mr. Uh, Mrs. Hancock.
Can you explain your general fund? If you look in twenty seventeen, you had two fifty and then you spent a hundred fifty, you had a hundred thousand returned. Um, looks like you're returning money based on your budget. Do you have the paper?
They don't have it right now.
No, 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 no. Are you in the wrong one?
This is not that question.
Sorry, that doesn't belong to them. Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any questions on that one.
I'm looking at that going, wow, you're giving two hundred, huh? You're giving back, well, I thought it was kind of crazy looking at that. I'm like, okay, sorry. That was kind of a crazy looking budget right there. You gave back a hundred thousand, Jim. Wow, you're doing great.
I lost a sheet of paper and apparently I found it.
Sorry about that.
Glad you're down.
Okay, um, nope. I thought you were, uh, giving back a little money for watching your budget, so.
Okay, any other questions? Tim, I think you guys are doing a good job. I'm looking forward to the, the, the wing, the mental health wing opening up and, and the collaborations that will come with that.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
I kind of bypassed the fairgrounds, I guess. I should have had them first, but I felt that needed to wait a little bit.
Lloyd, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Uh, I've got a really, really horrible connection. I almost couldn't hear anything that Tim was saying or Solana was saying. Can you have the gals, uh, I'll hang up and you can try it one more time?
We can do that one more time, but also on your phone, look for the mute. Look for the mute because that will help you out.
I, I did, and that didn't make, uh, almost no difference.
Uh, we didn't, I could still hear you the whole time through, but look on your phone. Or we'll have her call you back and then when, when you're not speaking mute and when you want to speak unmute.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Bye.
Sorry, Jeffrey.
Do you want us to wait?
Yeah, let's try to get him, Jordan, connect him. We'll give it two tries.
Mr. Ron?
Because we are getting a lot of feedback, especially if you're far enough away from your mic, it's not so bad. But then when, like, if we're close to it, we're getting that feedback really bad and then the recording isn't worth a heck.
Sounds like every time he talks, it bounces off a puddle of water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does, it sounds fun.
When you're doing the video conferencing, it's a lot better, but. George, you there? Hello, George?
Hello?
You there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you, Lloyd.
Yeah, I don't know what more we can do.
That's, nah, that's better.
Okay.
That's good. In fact, if you talk to us like that, that's good.
Okay.
Try one more, try a few more minutes and then if it doesn't work, I'll just hang up.
Okay, so we'll try talking into our mic, but if the feedback gets too bad. Ron Jeffries is up next and he's going to start, okay?
Hi, I'm Ron Jeffries, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you for your time today. I'm Ron Jeffries with the General Manager of Central States Fair. I have also with me Patty Sharp. She's our Finance Officer and does a remarkable job for us. The request, uh, cover page you see right there is a request for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three fifty-seven, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which is a two point one percent increase over our last year's budget. I provided for you in backup documentation, uh, numbers since two thousand and four indicating Pennington County's support. Uh, basically, we've had about, uh, three percent support increase from two thousand and fourteen to eighteen. And we're asking for a two point one percent increase for this year. The next page gives you a little bit of history about how we utilize the support from Pennington County. Uh, we go back to about two thousand and eleven and give you two thousand and eleven through to two thousand and seventeen of the monies that's provided by Pennington County and how that goes into buildings, grounds, equipment, utilities, insurance, uh, some Department of Corrections, uh, expenses and our gas and oil bills. Does not include any management or maintenance wages or general operating expenses. It's basically just the, the hardcore maintenance of the fairgrounds. The next page back actually gives you a breakdown of those numbers on the previous and shows you what some of those capital improvements were. This is the last year of capital improvements, and if you look at that, you'll see about, uh, forty-four thousand dollars that went into land improvements, mostly in electrical improvements. You'll see an additional, uh, seventeen, almost eighteen thousand dollars that went into materials to operate events, uh, fire truck, water truck and a, uh, livestock panels. And then some office equipment purchases as well for a total of about seventy-four thousand. And then the next page back gives you capital improvements from the prior year, which includes everything from asphalt repair to sprinkler heads, et cetera. Again, that particular year, all things included, was about two hundred and twenty-one thousand. We've always felt we've been a really good bargain for Pennington County in terms of how we are able to maintain the fairgrounds property on behalf of the county and utilize it for events and activities to generate traffic to Pennington County. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, is there any questions from the board? Mr. DeSanto.
Mr. Chair, Ron, um, why don't you give an idea of that lighting project that you, that you took care of last year? What's it saving per month?
Patty can give me about the, the event center lighting.
Yep.
Patty can actually give me a better run on that number for the electrical savings on the event center.
Um, it's running probably about twenty percent of savings.
Forty percent savings?
Twenty.
Oh, twenty.
Twenty.
And, and dollar figure, what would that equate to?
It's about thirty thousand over here.
Over there. Fantastic. Okay.
Big difference. And we're, we're utilizing LED lighting on any lighting upgrades or replacements that we do, including the entire office, uh, stall barns, some parking lots, some arenas. As we get to them and they need to be replaced, we're converting everything to LED.
And it also, um, I don't know if you've been out there, but it also improves the, uh, the experience of, of the rodeo and, and the events that are going on in that, uh, event center tremendously. The lighting is incredible now. It's, I mean, you might as well be out in the sun. It's fantastic.
Ms. Hancock?
You want me to speak? Okay. I actually am the board, on the board this year, and we have some exciting things coming forward. We're doing a, um, a, uh, economic impact study, which I think is going to be huge. Uh, we did find donations for them, um, about thirty-two thousand. And then also we're working on the building with, we had five hundred and fifty thousand from, um, the city. And the building we're estimating so far, perfect at one point two, so.
Correct.
Um, I think the economic impact study will be helpful to raise money and show, uh, people what, uh, impact we have for the fairgrounds. Um, just a wonderful board, um, a lot of volunteers. I think Ron didn't hit on that. Um, most of our stuff is done by volunteers for maintenance on some things. And so when we're asking for some money, um, from the county, I'll just tell you, um, they save hundreds of thousands of dollars and are very frugal with, um, what they do with these volunteers and themselves. They have a lot of cowboys on there. That do a lot of volunteering for everything we do, or a lot of, I should say rural people, um, cowboy, cowgirl, all sorts of things. So I'm pretty impressed about how many people are really into ag. And you'd be surprised how some of the city people came in and went, wow, I didn't know all this happened. And I was wondering, I was so, um, I think the fairground does a lot of amazing things for Rapid City and the surrounding areas for impact and hopefully improve that through an economic impact study.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron.
I think, uh, agree too. You guys are doing a good job and places shaping up and looking a lot better than I've seen in years.
Thank you very kindly. Appreciate the kind words. Thank you.
Your honor.
Thank you, guys. Next to my agenda. I am looking for.
Conservation?
Yeah. Pennington County Conservation West, Lindsay. Lindsay? Mainer? Okay. Thank you, Lindsay.
You're welcome. I'm Lindsay Mainer. I am the new district manager for the Pennington Conservation District. Um, I've been in my position for about a year and I've worked on it in my last year.
Oh, excuse me. We gotta cut you off. I can't hear a word anybody's saying.
George, we're gonna have to cut you off. We're getting so much feedback, we can't even hear it here. You hear?
Hey.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so I've been here for about a year now and I've seen a lot of potential for growth and improvement within the district. Um, there's a lot of potential itself within the district and we can also leverage that with help from partners to be able to make more of an impact on our community. Uh, this is something we're working on. So our mission is to conserve the earth's natural resources. Uh, this is especially important to me as a manager, so I'm focusing on educating people of the community and, um, the youth as well. I would also like to help improve certain areas in Pennington County where there could be more work. Um, you may have noticed that our request has gone up. There's several reasons for this. Our previous employee was not utilizing some of the benefits, so she zeroed them out last year, whereas I am utilizing them like health insurance. Uh, the starting wage was also raised to be competitive when I took the position with accounts, which accounts for some of the difference as well. We have also returned to quarterly newsletters, um, that have been reduced to two a year. And I returned it back to quarterly, so that is going to make the, or the printing and supplies jump up. Um, I've also needed training since I took this position. And so the, um, travel expenses, that type of thing, that's gone up to send me to, uh, Sioux Falls and here and, and a few other places to get me training so I can better understand and do the job. Um, my predecessor, she was there for quite a few years and so she took that part of them. She zeroed out the travel out of there, so. Um, one thing I've learned from the trainings and the conferences is the importance of educating people, again, our youth. They are the future of conservation. Um, so this coming year, I plan to visit schools in my district, since I'm on the west. I don't know if you guys know, but the town office is the Cheyenne River. So, um, I am responsible for all of the Rapid City School Districts, the Black Silver School District, the New Underwood School District and the Hill City School District. And I plan to go to those schools and educate students more on conservation next year. Um, some of our other projects that we do annually is we have, uh, annual speech contest. Last year, Pennington took first place in the state, which is pretty cool. And this year we took third place, so that's been very successful. I've had a lot of, um, kids that have benefited from that. And they get, they win scholarships to go to college when they win those from the speech contests. We do poster and photo contests. We also do essay contests. Um, and then we are also help students get different types of scholarships through the conservation districts. Um, we also sell and plant shelter belt, sell trees and plant shelter belts with a machine planter. And we offer seeding services with no, to no-tailed roles. Um, and then this year we recently applied and were awarded twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollar grant through the South Dakota Conservation Commission. And that will be used for, um, landowners that want to complete forest health, like forest thinning to help on wildfires in the future. Um, and we've also recently purchased a drone and we are going to use that to get pictures and videos for educational and promotional purposes for the district. I think that a lot of people don't know that we exist and there's a problem there. Um, so I plan to put stuff on YouTube. I have a Facebook page for the district to get the word out there. Do you have any other questions?
No, Lindsay, uh, Mark, I do, Mark, he looked like he had a question, that's why.
Right away.
Yeah, Mark DeSanto.
Mark DeSanto. Um, on the info and education, I saw that you've already purchased the drone, that the additional money in the budget for info and education is not for the drone, is it for training on the drone?
It would be for like tours and um, for me to go to schools and speak to kids. We host tours and um, we're working on on holding more classes for adults as well on soil health, that type of deal. When we do those, we provide lunch for them and then uh, the travel for you know, if we need to get people to help us put it on, whatever.
Okay, Mr. Chair, follow up a little bit. Um, also, you were talking about possibly in the future using the drone, um, maybe kind of like leasing it out so you can gain some revenue or or going and filming.
In the future, we might be, we might do that, use it as a service. Since it is commercial use, I had to get a license for it. Um, which I got last week, last Wednesday, actually. So I would have to go out there and do it.
True.
We wouldn't be able to lease it out. But I think there is potential for that.
I absolutely agree.
Um, I've had people already tell me of, that have bought and drones, they wouldn't have gotten them if they wouldn't have known we were gonna get one, so. I'm excited to um, do, uh, my main focus in the beginning is to do before and after seedings, plantings, the thinning grant, um, show the types of services that we have for the community and what we can offer you and what it looks like when it's done. Um, so, but yes, we may use it as a service in the future.
Thank you.
So Lindsay, does anybody else want to speak first?
Uh, just, you know. We normally don't give too big a raises in budgets to people who have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the bank. Yeah, that's. I know you've got a list of equipment there. You think you you're probably gonna have to replace.
Yeah, that's what the the money is saved back for, yeah. Yeah. We have different CDs designated for different types of equipment.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
Yes, I saw that too. And can you not take any from your capital outlay to balance your budget for this year?
We could.
Okay, I agree with Mr. Busker. You're, you've got a hundred and seven, seventy thousand. And I know the replacement of some of this equipment is gonna cost you some money, but maybe someone could tell me the difference between east and west and the forty-seven thousand dollar budget. One cents, a forty-nine-three in east. And this one's thirty-three. You guys, I mean, what?
They cover everything east of the Cheyenne River.
Okay.
In Pennington County and I do everything west of it.
Yes.
So you can use some of your money to balance the budget out of the hundred and seventy for the difference?
Yeah, the main purpose for that is for repairs, like I said, for our equipment. You know, if no one, something's gonna go down, we're replacing it. We have a machine planter for our trees and you have a list of, I think.
Yeah. I, Ms. Hickok, can you finish?
Go ahead, sir.
I would probably suggest keeping the budget the same as last year at this point in time. And probably before next year. Uh, coming forward with probably a little more detail of how we can even things out. You know, I mean, the reason why I say that is there is concern with that much, we're big of a reserve. I think you could cover it this year. And then we review it again next year.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion for the board.
To leave it the same, Lloyd, as last year?
If we do that, we need a motion to do.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
You're saying leave it at twenty-one-seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-one-seven-fourteen.
Can we just put that on our list?
I think we need a motion to do that, don't we? Need a motion to keep it at twenty-one.
And then put it on our list to see if everybody agrees. Or just make it today.
Make it today. So moved?
It's been moved to keep the same, seconded.
By you, seconded by DeSanto?
Oh, you moved?
I didn't.
I did?
Yeah.
Nice, seconded.
Do I have a second?
So moved by DeSanto, seconded by LaCroy. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So do you understand what happened? Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, well, I think we need to get a little more clarification on the stuff, but for next year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we come up to
East.
East Pennington. And I don't have your names down, so we just need.
That's good, then you don't know who I am. I'm Eldon Helms. I'm the chairman of the East Pennington Conservation District. We want to thank you for your support that you've given us over the years. We're gonna leave our budget right where, or our request right where it was last year. Um, some of the things we've, we're doing is um, this year, we planted a bunch of trees around the school and provided the trees and I think the fabric, I'm not quite sure, but so they got around the new school and wall. And they're gonna do a planting of some grasses for educational purposes of the kids, natural grasses, stuff like that. And the other thing is, um, our big thing this year, we've raised our bio grant. We uh, give out, or we sell bugs at a reduced price to people to kill Canadian thistles where they can't spray. Draws around waterways and stuff like that. And we've raised that up to, well, I don't know how much, how much interest we're gonna get, but we kind of raised it so that we can give out more grants for that to keep people interested in controlling the Canadian thistles.
Okay.
But we're gonna try to absorb that through ourselves, other than raise our um, budget requests.
Does anybody have any questions, Warren?
No.
Yes, Chairman.
Mrs. Hickok.
So you has, has budget at forty-nine-three minus fourteen-six, is that grants?
Well, that's our income. That's income from sale of trees, um, renting drills.
Okay, and do you have any capital outlay or anything like the other people do?
Yes, we do. Um, but some of it is earmarked to replace our tree cooler because it's the original. And so that's a lot of the, what we have in reserve is, is for that purposes.
So what, what do you have in reserve at this point?
Okay, she, um, our district manager was not able to attend and I thought she submitted that to you. She did not, no? Okay, I didn't see it.
It's around about the same as theirs, about a hundred and fifty-two, a hundred and seventy-five. I'm not exactly sure.
So your, your capital outlay is the same as theirs? As the last, the west?
Yeah, approximately. I'm not gonna say exactly. I'm just saying approximately, so. But they're not asking for an increase, keep it the same.
What, what we're asking for is basically pays the salary of the manager and I work part-time when she can't be in the office so that somebody's there to sell the trees when she's out planting the trees. And so that would just pay salaries, that's all. And there is no, we do not provide um, health insurance or anything. It is just basic salary, you know, for our manager.
And uh, we, we did raise her salary last year because she hasn't had a raise in four years, so.
So Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
Then I'm not in agreement with what we just did to the last people then. Because I thought that was gonna be different than this unless we're deciding that these guys need their twenty-one-seven because they were asking for thirty-three and this is thirty-six.
That's why I stress that they've come in and not asked for an increase, that they've set their budget and whereas, that, that was kind of a new setup, I think. And I understand some things are changing around, but.
But Chairman, do the comparables and they're about the same. That's what I'm saying, guys.
Yeah, but if I can, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
You know, I don't know much about these, but I'm not sure we can compare the east and the west with money-wise, that they do the same stuff.
Focus is different.
And, and, yeah, they really are. I mean, they're prairie and this is more trees, uh, although there's some prairie too, but uh, you know, I, I know what you're saying, but I don't see that their budgets are, are.
And that's why there is that split, because there's definitely a difference between what we focus on in the east, on the east side of the river and what is focused on in the west, yeah.
So Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
So I guess that's why I kind of didn't want to vote yet. I wanted to hear both sides before I voted, but um, I I don't know if I can change it, but I would have said, I would change to no on taking the other people's money and make them use the hundred and seventy because to be fair, you should do the same to these, even if their budget's the same. Um, they switched people, they told us that the difference is on them and it was thirty-three and this is thirty-six and they have comparable budgets. And again, we can say that these guys do something different, but I'm just trying to protect the other side in a sense that um, you've got a new person, you've got some new things happening there as well, so I don't know if I can change this uh, board's vote, but I know mine, um, I'm not in agreement with how they just made. And I don't know what we do about that.
It'd have to be the prevailing party. You want to bring up the one before, but I think my personal opinion is, I think Ron made a good point. We had the discussion with the young lady just before we closed. Uh, there wasn't a big increase in the, in these folks' budget, so it's not like it's unfair. I think there's, they probably need to do some work and they're gonna come back next year with some good data, but
Chairman, I was.
Right now, what we're dealing with is this one, not the previous one. So I think uh, the way we set it up was if we were gonna make changes to what was presented, we would vote on changes.
Okay.
So.
I, I was the prevailing party on the last one, so I don't know how we bring that back, but I would.
But we're on this one right now.
Yes, sir. Depending on what happens on the other one, I guess my vote would change, but because if you do it to one, you should do it to the other.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Out of curiosity, do you have any idea how many square miles are in your district? I don't know where. All I know, all I know is we're um, from Cine to Pedro and then from Washt, to the county line, or from the Cheyenne River to the county line. I don't know the exact square miles.
I thought this was on here, but it's not.
I think it is.
Oh, technically, is this, no, that's constituents. No, I don't have square miles.
Okay.
As I, I said, I think we need to deal with this one first, which is, uh, you're not asking for any changes. Is there, does anybody want to make any motions on this one? See none, I think, thank you, it looks like. Now.
Rescind or whatever you have to do.
Would you like to reconsider?
That'd be my motion to reconsider the west Pennington County Conservation District.
Sorry. So you're making a motion to reconsider?
Yes. Pennington County.
County West.
Yes, sir.
Conservative. Is there a second? I don't hear a second.
Okay.
This motion dies for like a second.
So Chairman, how do I put it on the record that I said no then, Ms. Julie?
You can't change a vote after it's voted.
Yeah.
Duly noted.
Okay, next we come up to GIS contract map. Don.
Good afternoon.
Morning, Don.
Uh, I'm Don Jarvanen. I'm the GIS coordinator for the Pennington County Rapid City GIS. And with me is Angela Talan, who will be the GIS coordinator for Pennington County GIS uh, in a few months.
Well, welcome.
So uh, what I'd like to do is just cover a little bit of what we've done this year and then uh, our budget request is, is higher this year. I want to explain the logic behind that. Uh, we're ending our twentieth year of operation. I've been here from the beginning. Uh, the GIS actually was formed as a, a joint system between the city and county approximately twenty-two years ago. Um, so it's been in existence for a long time. I was the first hire, uh, full-time hire in GIS. Uh, so I know some of the history at least of the budget. Uh, we provide uh, services to both city and county staff and to the public through uh, our software installations, data holdings and the public uh, interfaces to like Rapid Map and some of the new ones that we've launched this year. Um, this year, uh, some of the major things that we've done that uh, uh, beginning with the public can see, uh, for the county highway department, there are now four specialized websites uh, that we've built in conjunction with uh, the county highway department, uh, they adopt a highway site, uh, bridge and road weight limits. Uh, they have a, a site for their uh, annual projects that are coming up and that are current, so uh, citizens can go out and see what kind of construction is happening in their area, for example. And uh, there's another site for traffic highway counts uh, that we put up this year for them. Uh, we also maintain the voting district uh, site, um, and the Red City Park site. This year also, uh, we just completed uh, uh, the acquisition of new aerial photography. And we'll see deliverables probably, uh, uh, hopefully, uh, October, um, maybe November. So that's, that's uh, right now in a three-year cycle uh, for photography. The other thing that we've begun to do is uh, with a cloud-based magnet system. Uh, now uh, users can actually use their phone or tablets to collect data. And uh, we've worked with some of the city departments and the county highway department uh, is looking at, uh, they've done some of that also. Uh, county highway department also uh, just uh, signed a contract, uh, a state contract uh, with the vendor to collect their signs. And uh, the vendor's gonna use uh, a, a LiDAR, like a vertical LiDAR where they drive the roads. Um, and it collects data and it can actually see uh, the, sort of the imprint of the sign. That's how they're gonna collect the data. So we'll be providing the technical support uh, for our side to get that data into the, into the system for the county. Uh, we have a hundred and forty installations of our desktop software. And for the first time ever, uh, there are more installations at, at county offices than city offices. We have seventy-three at the county and sixty-seven at the city. Uh, it's usually been the other way around. Uh, we have in, installations of server software. Uh, the server software, uh, for example, holds that what we have, the data servers. Uh, that, we have uh, two data servers at the city and I think two at the county. Uh, county highway now is running on their own data servers and we help them with that. And then we have four web mapping servers. So that's just a little uh, summary of what, uh, what we've done this year, what we have in place. Uh, our budget request this year, uh, the entire budget request from the city is three hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars this year, uh, which is an increase of one point two percent. Uh, the actual dollar increases uh, that we've requested is four thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Um, in, in that request, uh, our personnel costs are actually going down. But we're requesting more money in consulting services. Uh, this year, actually just this last week, we completed a pilot project for surveying the section corners in the county uh, to increase the accuracy of the parcels in Rapid Map. And um, we want to continue uh, surveying every year that we have money. So we've asked, uh, on the city side, we've asked for an increase in that line item so we can uh, move that project forward. Uh, the other cost that we have, uh, personnel costs, we have three FTEs, which we've had for a number of years. That's fifty-four percent of our budget. Uh, our software and hardware costs, which are both of what we, uh, that, that's sort of our operating budget is about eighty-seven thousand. Uh our software and hardware costs, which are both of what we uh that that's sort of our operating budget is about eighty-seven thousand dollars. So this year, after twenty years of operation, um the county has been contributing a hundred thousand dollars for twenty years. Uh I think in your packet, did you? Okay, so anyway, this is just um a uh a look at the 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 gears that I have going back to twenty-eleven. Of the uh overall budget and then the county participation. Uh when the when the system started. The budget was approximately two hundred thousand dollars and the county was at at about fifty percent of that. Uh in discussions with the new county or the city budget analysts and some of the department head, city and county. Uh we'd like to keep the county at roughly a third of the cost of the of the direct cost of the system. Uh with our uh in twenty eighteen, uh the budget. Uh percentage for the county was twenty-seven point eight. And then with this uh new budget request in twenty nineteen for the city and raising uh. The county portion by eighteen thousand dollars, that'll put the county at thirty-two point eight percent. And uh the other factor there is that uh the county does contribute uh. Uh indirectly to the budget with uh the lady at Equalization, uh Louanne Foxlam. Uh a lot of her work is done maintaining the parcels. About ninety percent of her work goes into that and then contributes directly to the system. So uh with county being at a third, you have to factor in uh her wages and benefits. Uh so that actually puts the county probably up about forty uh forty-plus percent, so uh the city uh. Folks felt that that was a, you know, a fair split of the system to run the system. So anyway, that's our request for this year. Are there any questions?
Chairman.
Mrs. Hancock.
I don't know if anybody's seen what Don does, but um he's amazing um through the city and the county. He goes above and beyond and does a lot of that work that he doesn't have to do either for our county. On some of that G I S and other stuff. Um he's very efficient what he does and uh. Again, he hasn't asked us for money for over twenty years and um I'm gonna tell you, he's well worth every penny. In his staff for what they do and this increase, so I'm gonna give him kudos for everything he's done without getting paid for it for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, as I stated earlier, the budget as presented, if we wanna change it, may takes a uh. A motion and a. Change and so far I've heard nothing. That's what I'm thinking unless somebody else has a comment. So it looks like the board at this time is gonna accept. Your change of one eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Dan. You've done a good job.
Yep. It's been a pleasure working here and working with you.
Hope to work with you too.
Yep. Thank you, guys. Appreciate all you do.
But we can change that later. We got if it ends up being to three to two, we're all right. Two to one. I just wanna let you know that. But we can always change to provisional. I'll wait.
Next up on the agenda is. Public Advocate.
Is it Paul?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I was wondering about the the voice articulation there, but now I, when you shut the phone off, it went away.
It went away, it did.
I'm Paul Brankin. This is uh Daleen Bedaloon. She's the administrator of Dakota Plains. I've uh been with P C A P, as we call it. This is going on seventeen years now. It's been a while. Uh we've asked for uh an increase. Uh if you note. Uh we closed six hundred and four cases last year. The increase is helping us with. The lawyers with support staff and that's that's crucial to getting the high volume that's coming now with the increase in the. The drug epidemic in Pennington County. And uh another thing that's increased the caseload is the Van Honeck decision, if you're familiar with that. That dealt with uh uh abuse and neglect cases where the the parents have to be represented early on in the case, not later. So that's that's increased our volume quite a bit. Uh like I said, we closed six hundred and four cases. We get the cases from the public defender's office. And they don't give up the easy cases. Most of the stuff that we get are felonies. Felony matters and a lot of individuals have multiple files. I looked this morning, just I was getting ready for this and and last year alone, I personally. Had twenty-eight matters set for jury trial that I resolved short of going to trial. And I've got eighteen already this year, so that's a tremendous savings for the county, not having a jury trial, bringing in jurors and bailiffs and. Tying everybody up. And that's a product of going on twenty-five years of experience and doing this.
So Paul, on your budget, you're looking at last year's was. Two sixty-one and you're asking for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty increase of forty-nine point three percent?
We're asking for anything we can get, but again, as you can see, and Daleen is is more versed with the uh. The financials in this, but we were kind of been working at a deficit for a long time. And Dakota Plains, the agency, has been covering that. And again, we we'd like to increase our support staff and and truly, that's what makes uh litigation easy is when I have everything prepared. And my assistant has everything prepared by this, you know, the the support staff, I'm able to go in and. You know, I'll have forty-five cases in a week and it's, you know, that the the money's well spent, I believe.
Okay, Paul. Does any commissioners have any questions?
I've known Paul for a long time and uh how many trips to Hawaii does this include? How many trips to Hawaii does this include?
None at all. You know, I've got two hundred and some hours of vacation, cause I. I seldom ever take off.
I'm pretty familiar with their operation and uh they have saved the county tons of money. Because it we pay them a set amount every year. Otherwise, we would be paying uh private attorneys and. I guarantee you, we wouldn't be getting the same. Price and deal as we get with them. I'm I'm kinda prejudiced.
And that's true, cause a private attorney has no uh, you know, benefit of settling a case or, you know, doing anything to our litigation or or frivolous motion hearings or whatnot.
So Bron, you're you're okay with? Your recommend.
It's quite an increase.
It is, that's right.
Uh frankly, they've we've probably got a pretty good deal the last few years from them, so.
Miss Julie.
If you look at the. Increase that they've presented versus the increase that we've had in the other line items for. A N N attorneys and court-appointed attorneys over the same timeframe, this. Does not match what we've had to raise in those other two line items. So they are still. A good deal for us if you make it in comparison to where those other two, which again, you still have no control over.
Thank you, Julie. Mister DeSanto.
I'm seeing in paragraph three, um. Say it might be the, yeah, second page. That you took a loss over expenses of about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thirty-five percent.
I would be more apt. To vote that we. Give them half of the increase that they're asking for. It's gonna cover the loss and then some on top of that. Um half would be, what were we looking for? One. Looking for an increase of one twenty.
Eight.
Eight.
Forty-nine.
Sixty-four thousand dollars, which would give them sixty-four minus. Thirty-eight. Twenty-six thousand dollars in additional above what their expenses were last year to help defray some costs of additional.
I'm here to take what you wanna give.
So that would be my motion to uh give them an increase of sixty-four thousand dollars.
An increase of sixty-four thousand?
Half of the one twenty-eight, sixty-four.
That'd be my motion just for discussion. I'll second it.
The second for discussion. It's been a motion. To offer half of the one twenty-eight, six thirty, so it'd be a little bit more.
Right.
Chairman.
One twenty-eight, six.
Can I speak?
Yeah, I was just trying to get the numbers right for the motion.
Okay, if if I could have the amount.
Sixty-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen.
Three hundred and fifteen, yes.
Sixty-four, three fifteen.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm okay?
Yep, now you're good.
Okay, so what I'm seeing in eighteen is a twenty-three thousand dollar increase and what I'm seeing. They were short sixty thousand in seventeen. Am I correct?
Yes.
So and and I see it being higher. This year probably than ever had in a long time because of all Julie made a good point of all the issues that are have happening. I don't know what that number would be, but I think it needs to be more than sixty just from. Previous. Does that make sense? So I don't know where this board wants to go, but. And if we put it, Miss Julie can ask, is that okay, Miss Julie? If we put it at sixty-four, are we gonna have it in our budget if they're short? Like if it's short twenty thousand or I mean, what happens when?
It's a contract basically, so whatever you approve is what we'll pay them. If they have a shortage, they. I suppose they could come back and ask for an amendment to the contract. But they've not done that in the past and I don't know if it's really allowed under the type of.
It's not.
Position and contract that we have with them.
I mean, really, you know, we're we're taking whatever you offer, you know.
Chairman, I understand that, Paul, but I also am am listening to Julie. I'm listening to Buscud and I'm thinking. That your sixty-four half is not gonna be enough, meaning they should. Paul just told you, he works two hundred hours. I mean, he has two hundred hours of vacation. Not that people shouldn't work hard and give some of their time, but we also should um. Treat them right for what they're what they're doing for us. I don't know if the number, my my gues- guesstimate, and that's a guesstimate, is more like eighty-five and not sixty-four. I I think it's gonna be. At least more over half.
Well, just just throw that out there. When you added the sixty-four thousand, you're bringing them up to three hundred and twenty-five thousand from two sixty-one. So. If you add another, if you make that eighty-four thousand, that's splitting the difference between your guys' motion and.
The issue?
Issue.
So I'll make a substitute of eighty-four.
Second.
Substitute motion for eighty-four made by Hancock selected by Buscud. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
One no from Mister DeSanto. So it looks like you're gonna get. What'd I have? Two sixty-one. Round three forty-five.
Thank you.
For your new budget.
Thank you for all you do, Paul.
Appreciate it. I do.
Thank you.
Next year, the. I'm gonna be sixty-six next month, so.
You've still got a spring in your step.
Still looking pretty spry. Yeah, I do. Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu.
Okay, Doris Ann with senior citizens, or no, I'm sorry.
I've advocated that we give them a raise for a few years, so. I'm I'm all in favor of giving them a few bit more dollars. They're taking on more responsibility and. Some of us people are aging, so we, one of these years, I'll be the senior citizen.
Now, that is a first that we've had someone from D I S speak up before you even got to present it.
That's good. Thank you, Ron. I appreciate it. And this is April Malik. She's the new uh director for Menelusahan. And she's uh our new secretary as well for the Pennington County Council of Aging, so.
Did Addie leave?
No.
Rita Wagner.
Addie though is a great assistant in Menelusahan. She's been there a long time. Rita Wagner was the last director.
Okay, so from the looks of it. Senior citizens support, your average budget's been nineteen or requests have been for nineteen, four, forty-six.
Yes.
And this year, you're asking for fifty-five hundred dollars more, fifty-five, fifty-four.
Yes, sir.
They uh they supply the transportation tickets for a lot of senior citizens around town and get uptown and. And to doctor's appointments and also supply money to the various uh senior citizen centers for. New refrigerators or stoves and I guarantee you, if you go to their meetings and you. They argue about giving twenty-five dollars to somebody, so. They uh they know what where they're spending their money.
A motion for.
But. To keep it, keep it what's set, add it, there's no motion. So.
I I hope so, I hope.
So what they're, so what's what's just happened is your advocate. Is requesting no change to the what your request was, so your request for five fifty-five more. Is granted if we take no motion.
All right.
Nobody's speaking, so I think it's good.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all you do for us and we'll continue to do our part. Thanks. Have a nice day.
Now, did I? Okay, we had one additional request, which was for Boys and Girls Club. From Annie Rogers. Did I get that right? Anne. I see E and I don't know why I do that.
Okay, absolutely. I'm uh Anne Rogers Popejoy. This is Richard Walker. We're with Boys and Girls Clubs of the Black Hills. And this is our first request to Pennington County. Um we currently receive support from Lawrence and Fall River Counties. We operate three Boys and Girls Clubs, one in Hill City, one in Hot Springs, and one in Lead Deadwood. So our home office is the Hill City office, but this request is specifically for the Hill City Club. So you would not be supporting the other two clubs. Basically, what we're looking for is your buy-in to help us support kids. It costs just twenty-five dollars for an annual membership for the Boys and Girls Club. And then we charge twenty-five dollars a month for kids to be part of our summer program. Our annual fee to actually so or our annual outlet to actually support those kids is seven hundred and fifty-four dollars a child. So we are available to kids when it matters the most, but from three to seven o'clock after school and from seven A M to five thirty P M over the summer. We serve more than six hundred kids across all three clubs. We see an average of eighty-six a day in Hill City. What we're specifically asking you to support is programs. So Boys and Girls Clubs see most of our programs fall in character, leadership, healthy lifestyles, and then we're expanding into STEAM. Science, technology, education, art, and math. Um when you support programs, you support everything from supplies to snacks to helping us pay the staff. When we look at our programs specifically over the summer, we're working to combat summer learning loss. Because nearly thirty percent of our kids live below the poverty line, a lot of that falls on us to help them keep up with their middle-class peers. By the time a student reaches the ninth grade, they could be an entire grade level behind their middle-class peers, so that's something that we absolutely. Fight for and advocate for. We have a professional staff because we operate three clubs. We have shared staff at the management level and then below that, each of our clubs has an individual director in what we call youth development staff. Uh we are a chartered chapter of Boys and Girls Clubs of America, so while we don't receive specific funds from Boys and Girls Clubs. We are able to apply for grants that are earmarked just for clubs. So I think on your list, you'll see the Office of Juvenile Justice and. As one of those, so those grants come to the national office and then as individual clubs, we're able to apply to get that money. We have uh free training through Boys and Girls Clubs of America. Usually when we send people, all we're paying is the actual, the mileage or the airfare. We're not paying to attend the conferences. A lot of our curriculum, if it's from Boys and Girls Clubs of America, comes free to us. And then we have to purchase the supplies and train the staff to use it.
Um I don't have. Mister DeSanto.
Um how many kids are attending in? Um, how many kids are attending in Hill City? I'm, that's what you're asking for.
They have two hundred and seventy-nine registered members.
Two seventy-nine?
Yep.
And what's the, would you say the average weekly attendance is during summertime?
During the summer, they see an average of almost a hundred kids a day.
A hundred?
Yep, just about. And Hill City is our original club, so it started as the Hill City Youth Center in the nineteen seventies, and then became a chartered Boys and Girls Club in two thousand and two. So it's the longest established club. And then our closest club is in Pierce, so Boys and Girls Clubs are pretty, um, spread out across the state.
I'll follow up.
Hundred and fifty dollars a kid? If you take the average of how many are attending a week?
Yeah. And really, just like the people before us, any level of support that we can garner from the county is fantastic for us. It's something that Boys and Girls Clubs of America looks for us to have. And especially when we're applying to granting agencies, which is where most of our budget comes from, to be able to show city and county support is really essential for them to have confidence in what we're doing.
Mr. Chairman?
Hmm, Mr. Buscud.
Has Hill City supported you in the past?
Yes.
This year too?
Yes.
So I see you got fifteen thousand requested, but.
Yep.
They did, okay.
Generally, I think they give ten thousand, we request. So across the board, we've requested fifteen thousand dollars from each of our counties and each of our cities. And then we'll see where those come back. Um, last year, we requested ten thousand from Deadwood. They came back with ten thousand. So Deadwood seems to come right up to the level of their cost, but usually we see between five and ten thousand dollars less than what we request.
I, did you have a comment, Ms. Hancock, before?
Yes, Chairman, we, we always have a lot of requests, but for youth, um, I don't know if that's fact, but I do know my brother, albeit in all fairness, runs a Boys Club, Girls Club in Aurora, Colorado. Has been in Boys Club, Girls Clubs for years. Um, and I also attended Girls Clubs, so I can tell you, when you don't have the money to do anything, they're huge. They're kinda like our, our rural, um, extension office. There's a, for the people in the cities that do the same thing, and the programs are amazing. And I think I have told people over and over again that know me, you get horseback riding, you get things that you would never be able to do in these, um, programs at the Girls Club, Boys Clubs. And they do some amazing stuff for kids for college and other things, so there's a lot of groups that compete for these monies, but I don't know.
I.
On, on the request, what we should do, but I think, um, if we could help them, um, I think they're, I don't think it'll be, it'll be money well spent, in bottom line.
Let, uh, you want one more comment? Go ahead.
So being part of a national organization guarantees the quality of our programs. So basically, we are, we ha- are overseen on a regional level and then on a national level, so we're subject to safety, safety inspections every year. Our staff has to be completing and ascending through a leadership academy. We have to be qualified at a certain level. We have to pay our staff at a certain level. So what we do is really highly regulated, so that we are able to offer those high-quality programs that are available to us, free of charge, through Boys and Girls Clubs of America. So across the board, youth centers are incredibly valuable, but a Boys and Girls Club puts a stronger guarantee behind that than an independent facility might.
I'm, my, my two cents is there is no doubt that what you guys do is good. I mean, there's multiple agencies out there that are doing great things. And you can tell by my mailbox, but when I go to the mailbox, I'm getting lots of requests, and the youth, I think, is we, you, we got great support with it in our community that we all wanna really help. My personal opinion, fifteen thou-, you know, once we start this, it's hard to take it away. And, and that's the problem. Once we do it with you, three more are gonna come next year. That's what I wanna caution the group with. I see you've got some great people on board. I mean, you've got the, you know, you're getting fifty-six committed. The War of Mining, you get, I mean, you got some, and the rest are all requests that I see so far. So I don't, I'm not sure where this board wants to go with this. I just wanted to get my two cents in there before they throw something out.
Chairman? Um, I'm gonna be up straight. Um, usually, we don't, we have enough subsidies through our other organizations that we have in here. And I totally support what you guys are doing, but I'm in agreement with Lloyd, as much as I have to say this. And I'd also like, if you could, if you do come back next year, I'd like to see what your budget is. Cause a lot of my brothers, what he does is he raises it through the community, meaning, uh, not off the, the counties and the cities. He has a team, the Broncos sponsor him, people sponsor their Boys Club, Girls Clubs. And he raises money through that instead of asking county and cities in some, not all cases.
Right, so we have an eight-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar operating budget. We're asking you to contribute less than two percent.
Okay.
So we're gonna, this year, we're gonna raise a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in private donations.
Okay.
You know, one of the, one of the bad things that we don't really have, and what a lot of agencies do, is, uh, an application, a request form.
Right.
I, I don't think, do we, Holly? I mean, for, for subsidies, you know, like the John T. Verkervich Foundation, you, they have a, a list of requirements that you have, and I, I hate to start throwing things forward when really, if we're gonna go, go this route, that's what we should do.
Yeah, and we do currently have a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar request into the Verkervich Foundation.
Yeah, see, it was quite a bit. So, not to discourage you guys or anything like that, but the, the sense that I'm getting is I don't think we're gonna approve the fifteen thousand for this year. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, any amount of money is helpful. Like I said, we're get, last year, we requested ten thousand from Lawrence County. We pulled five thousand. Last year, we requested ten from Fall River, pulled ten. But if we were able to pull fifteen thousand dollars total from our three counties, that's the level of support that we need to be able to give to those granting agencies, to say, yes, there is community buy-in. It's not just individual donors. It's our cities and our counties that also say, these kids matter. So really, we look to be able to use matching funds and magnet dollars. And that's really critical to being able to access those other funds that we are absolutely applying for all the time.
Yeah.
But Chairman, if I could, without being discouraging, we do have extension and other things that we support that is more the rural community. We don't really go, if I'm correct, into the city subsidies as much. And we had decided that a while ago, and that doesn't have to be the board's, uh, decision now, but, um, we also have Health and Human Services and other things that we contribute, and they're huge for us. So we do give back to the community and in those organizations, one way or another, that, whether it be Boys Club, Girls, or the same people that you're serving. It's just not through your organization. That's why a lot of times I have a hard time subsidizing things outside of our county.
Well, we're in your county, so we're only asking for funds for Hill City.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
And we already received funds from Lawrence and Fall River to support Lead Deadwood and Hot Springs.
Okay.
And as my colleague quite rightly says, any amount that you could possibly give, even if it's nowhere near the fifteen thousand, at least it would, it would go a long way to help in the grand scheme of things. Um, I've only been with the club, uh, the last six months as the resource director. Um, I've been very fortunate to see what the club's actually doing. I know you all appreciate that. Um, I'm responsible for the fundraising, so I go out and we, we do always wonderful things to try and bring money in to directly benefit the children. Um, so as my colleague quite rightly says, anything you could give, if it was five thousand, we would be eternally grateful for that, so. Again, in your consideration, uh, we would certainly ask for your help if you can.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Mr.
I have one suggestion. I, you know, Deb pointed out, and I know this happens in many of the, of the, uh, municipality areas where Boys and Girls Club are at, looking for money. Have you guys spoken to, uh, the Rapid City Rush, for example, to get a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club, have a, a rush night that?
So the Rapid City Rush supports the Club for Boys. And so the Club for Boys was a Boys and Girls Club until the nineteen eighties, when, well, they were a Boys Club until girls came in, and then they wouldn't take girls, so they lost their affiliation. But in Rapid City, Rapid City has stayed extremely loyal to the Boys Club. So we don't do as well in Rapid City fundraising because of the, the Club for Boys.
Okay.
So that's, so the Rush, we were able to get, um, in-kind support from them, like we got some T-shirts last year, which was really delightful, but that doesn't go very far towards helping your bottom line.
Gotcha. Okay, you guys have something you wanted to? I think at this point, this was a request for fifteen thousand. I have heard no other options besides that, so I think, uh, I think we need to take a vote on the request.
Very well.
Unless somebody has a sub, an, a motion to make. Seeing none, all in favor of that fifteen-thousand-dollar request for, uh, the Boys and Girls Club indicate aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Can I ask a quick question? So we've never been able to apply for funds, and this year we were. So is the reason that we weren't able to apply is that you weren't going to fund youth groups in general? Do you know why? Cause we're both fairly new.
Right.
Yeah.
But our executive director let us know that they've never been able to get a funding request into Pennington County. And just because we're funded in our other counties, that was something that we were really trying to advocate for. Is this not something that we should be pursuing in the future? No offense intended at all, but just as far as.
You are asking a wonderful question. That's why I was just bringing up, well, you know.
Boards change.
Yeah, boards change, but I mean, really, if, we're not in the business of, of being a grant, uh, facility, so that, that's why we don't have anything like that. So usually, if you, that's something you want, you talk to Julia, you talk to our administration, you set up on the agenda, and do just as you did. You know, we're, that's why I suggested the John V. Verkervich, and why I passed on all these other people, that's, they do the, they come and, they'll come to our regular meetings and ask for money.
So, so we could request money for individual projects or events, but not to become part of your budget? Is that?
No.
No, okay. I guess I don't. So we absolutely, and I'm not arguing, but, so we have an eight-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar operating budget. We're pulling less than fifty thousand dollars from our municipalities. Clearly, we're, you know, doing a lot of work to apply through these other foundations, and we're meeting that budget. We have a balanced budget every year. So, is there any situation in which it would be appropriate for Boys and Girls Club to the Black Hills to ask for money from Pennington County?
You can ask all you.
You can tell me no. I'm just really trying to, you know, to kind of streamline the way that.
You could.
Yep.
It's when budget requests come in, so any entity can come and certainly
Sure.
ask. We've always been open for, um, budget submissions.
Okay.
Um, like they said, boards change and priorities change, and I know years and years ago, they did more kinds of, um, but government, our mandates keep getting, you know, jails and courts, and so they've, they're at the point now where they have to focus more on the required mandated services, and so the remaining money is, is a lot tighter.
Holly.
And harder to compete for.
I think you made a good point, but I think what, she was kinda talking like on special events, cause the city used to ha- has a contingency fund where people all of a sudden will come in and put on the agenda, we got this event, could you help fund for five thousand dollars? And the city council has the decision whether they can pull from that. We don't really do that.
Okay, okay. Chairman?
Ms. Hancock.
I'll just tell you, this is my philosophy. When, because we have extension youth here, and we fund that. We have conservation, we fund that. I look at it more of a rural, when I give, um, or we have things, things that are mandated, of course. Is our courts like, like they said, but we only have so much pot of money.
Sure, oh, absolutely.
And, and that's what we're trying to tell you too, that if we're gonna put it, a lot of times, we have that program, kinda like you guys do, through the extension. We give them like eighty-nine thousand, and then they get some from the state. The conservation is part of what we do in the rural areas. It's not that, that you're doing anything bad by asking or coming forward. It's a good thing. But it's just, what is the, um, what is the philosophy of the board at the time?
Okay.
I'll just tell you up straight. Um, right now, it's a lot of the egg stuff is what we're doing, and not that you're not doing any egg, cause that's Hill City.
Yeah, we do a tremendous amount of nutrition education.
But, um, bottom line is too, my brother does a lot more fundraising. I know it's a bigger area and a bigger city, but he does tons of fundraising as well, and that's where he gets, I think, most of his financial backing.
We do too. We get more than ninety percent of our budget through fundraising.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I didn't catch that motion.
The motion, it's, it's not in our budget. It was a request, so I asked, uh, the request was for fifteen thousand. So we took a vote, were we gonna allocate fifteen thousand out of the budget?
Or deny?
Or deny.
We denied it.
We denied. Who made and seconded the motion?
Nobody did. I think Lloyd made the motion and I seconded it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I remember.
I, I think that's what, yeah. Julie, it's been suggested that the commission may be ready to consider provisional budget with what you presented. Um, I'm not sure. I just heard the interest, so I'm not quite sure what, if it's all the employee, or employee requests. Uh, try to keep the reserves at nineteen percent. So that would make it, help me out here, please. Yeah.
You wanna address the issues that need to be settled?
Well, it's gonna be, I think you're gonna have to cut, we reduced it a little bit from what was presented.
Yeah, the only.
Slightly, but not.
Slightly, it, it won't make a fact.
So I'm thinking, uh, move to accept the four building and grounding, bu- grounds employees, the eight detox, uh, three law enforcement.
That's a negative three.
Negative.
Minus three, those, one for planning. We know where the funding's coming from for that. Two for the state's attorney, four for dispatch. Direct the staff to make, uh, across the board cuts of one-point-seven-five, two, two-point-five-five? Do we, we gotta make one or the other?
Yeah, it, um, the two-point-five-five, that's the range.
Yeah.
So if you tell me that, um, you wanna, if this passes, to approve all the FTEs, to set reserves at nineteen percent, not to use any CPI, I can go in with the changes made to date. Which the only one today was the eighty-four thousand contract. Then I will take it in, and it will be closer needs to the two-point-five-five.
We also reduced conservation, remember?
Yeah, but it'll be closer to that one. And then with those others, then I can tell you what that reduction will be.
So you just need a motion or a direction to do that, or?
If you wanna approve it today, or you want me to bring it back? Is it legal to approve it today? Julie?
Mr. DeSanto? I think we were talking, um, we weren't gonna approve anything until we had our special meeting on FTEs.
But we could, we could direct her to do this.
We can direct her to do this, but I don't, I don't think we should be voting on a provisional. I mean, we should, we could direct you to.
So you want me to prepare a draft with these changes to tell you what that percent of reduction would be?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, but, but here's, here's a good question. There is, uh, healthcare clinic, I think we can reduce that one. But insurance, I, you know, you, on, on this budget summary, you have a two-point-five-five percent tax cut in insurance, and I don't think we can do that. Isn't that, that's kind of a contractual.
Yeah.
We better look at that one.
Exactly.
Mental health center, uh, behavior management, that's set by statute. I don't think we can reduce that one.
No, there's a few in there that we would not reduce.
Yeah, then, uh, one more was the bond payments and stuff.
Yes, but we would take it out of the eight-hundred-thousand CIP.
Okay, you, you.
Yeah, I've already kinda talked, yeah, the, the contracts that are in, um, would be about it. Yeah, but we would make equal cuts to the non-general fund also.
Okay, so I'm assuming we need a motion.
You can just direct me and I can come back with it, cause you're not gonna do a vote, if, or if you want a motion
No.
To direct me to do that. I think I understand it.
But she knows what to do.
We don't need a motion.
You know what you're doing. Now we need to, go ahead.
Need to set what date you wanna reconvene, recess, recess to?
Hold on a sec.
Somebody, go ahead.
We don't want him to cut it from fire, guys, we already reduced the budget, they don't.
You haven't touched the fire, county fire budget.
Okay, thank you.
So when?
We gotta figure out a date.
When are you leaving for good here?
Twenty-eighth, last day.
Okay, so we gotta do it before the twenty-eighth?
We have next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday or Wednesday.
In the morning? Anybody got Tuesday morning open? I can.
I can.
You're cutting into my golf pretty serious.
Cutting into my work.
Cutting into my life.
What's more important, golf or work?
Golf, golf.
Okay, Tuesday morning it is, what time's nine?
We good with that, Lloyd?
I'm fine.
Bus, I mean, screw.
I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
DeSanto?
I can probably get it out today. Yeah, today, so that you'll have, I'll send it to Holly.
Thank you.
We need a motion on setting that date? Let's just do it.
You recon, yeah, you recon, recess until that date, so these are all continual meeting minutes.
Okay.
I moved to reconvene on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, sixth, at nine AM.
Yep.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.